Hurry, Isaiah.[6.79][6.79](laughter)
We'll wait for you.
All right, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Ranch Mirage City Council for Thursday, October 3rd. We'll be serving as city council, library board, housing authority board, and also as representing the redevelopment successor agency. So we're going to do all of that today, and you'll hopefully enjoy your day while you're here. Can we please have the flag salute? Would you please stand and follow me in the salute to our flag?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cindy, would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Heinz.
Present.
Councilmember Hobart. Mayor Pro Tem Smotrich.
Here.
Councilmember Wyll.
Here.
And Mayor Kite.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilman Hobart, please.
Second.
Okay, and the motion carries four zero with one absent. We'll now move on to the section of the agenda dealing with special presentations. And our first speaker today will be John Hicks, who is the project manager of the Ritz-Carlton Hotel. John, would you like to come up? We have asked John to come before us, the first meeting of every month, and just keep us up to date on what's going on with the Ritz and all the good news that you've got to bring forward to us. So, John, it's all yours.
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, it's always a pleasure. First, let me apologize for running in late.[133.16][133.16](laughter) We're actually conducting our weekly construction meeting. Today, I can report that we started laying carpet. We have a junior ballroom now that is fully carpeted, and people will be hanging wall coverings, starting with the junior ballroom this weekend. And that essentially gets us to a milestone that we're excited to see, I can tell you, and that is the final trim out. Based on our current schedule, travertine, the thousands of feet of natural stone flooring continues to go in. And we're actually working on the exterior terrace deck for the main hotel. Simultaneously, we're working on the terrace decks for the spa suites building for natural stone. Ritz-Carlton made a minor modification. We thought we were going to bring in a little bit more synthetic turf, but we're completing the irrigation where they do the tree lighting ceremony. We're actually going to go with a real tifting sod, and that's scheduled to go in by the eighth. So you'll actually start seeing some green out in the landscape. Landscaping will continue over the next forty-five days for the exterior to bring a little bit more lushness to the entrance, all the way back into the porter casier. And then we'll have a proposal next week, and I'll have a preliminary plan to show you what the landscape will look like coming down Frank Sinatra, that actually, the hotel frontage, and through the entrance, as well as into the porter casier. And, like I said, next we meet, I'll have that color rendering for you. What we're trying to do is get, make it a little bit more closer to the five-star resort. The landscape got a little weedy out there, so we asked to make some modifications. And plantings, the new landscape architects selected some plantings that are complementary to not only the desert, but Maratha and the neighboring properties as well. As far as interior, the main ballroom is being painted. As I came off the hill, they were actually painting the main ballroom. Well, we're going to do a mock-up wall covering for Ritz approval next week in the main ballroom. Carpeting will start tomorrow, actually, in the ballroom with padding first. So if you guys would like to come up, I can give you, members of the city, a tour, so you can actually get an idea, you start getting a glimpse now of what the hotel is going to look like on opening day. Lighting fixtures in the public spaces are ongoing. We actually have the three-meal restaurant. The lighting has been completed. We're coming back in next week with audio. And we are actually doing some of the boring stuff. We're testing all the low voltage that's in the hotel to get internet service, cellphone service up there. So the low-voltage subs are out there doing final testing and certification. The fire sprinklers, fire suppression system, as far as sprinklers are concerned, they switch to what we refer to as the TI, or the Tenant Improvement Scope of Service, that being the Edge Restaurant, the Kids Club, which is on the lower level. They are now pressure testing and doing flow tests for the main hotel. That should get us our five-year certification, hopefully within about two to three weeks. Alarm, we just had a discussion with them, they will be ready for alarm testing week after next. So now, we had a little issue over Saturday, some of you probably heard about it, where we had an alarm go off accidentally. The painters got a little overzealous and inadvertently hit a device. And we set the fire alarm off. Fire Department had to come up and assist in shutting that thing down, but we got that resolved. So that tells us that our fire alarm is actually working. I saw him sitting in the back there.
Yeah, we shouldn't have a fire right now that we're in trouble.
No fires. It was just somebody that didn't realize what they shot the gun past, and lo and behold, here came the fire department up the hill, first time on my watch, so (laughter). Other than that, like I said, we are now at a point where we are doing final paint down Wing B. Carpeting is, we have the padding. When I left, they had the padding down the main corridor for Wing B. Carpeting will be installed later tonight, actually, but before 7:00 PM. And it's full court press. Right now, the contractor is tracking to complete the project. They're scheduled to be out of there by year's end. And then we are actually doing a phase turnover to Ritz-Carlton, section by section. And that's actually, the junior ballroom next week will be the first space to turn over to Ritz-Carlton. And each day, each week, additional locations will be turned over to them. So we're very close.
Okay, John, thank you. Any questions from council?
John, I'm sure you've never been asked this question, ever. We're always asked, "Well, do you think it'll be available Christmas? Do you think it'll be available February?" Et cetera, et cetera. And we generally say, "It's going to be ready. We know we're close, and more than that, you're going to be just delighted with the end product." So give us what you would anticipate would be an opening.
I spoke to Doug, he's the general manager for the hotel. When I spoke to him, I know he's planning a tree lighting ceremony event. However, knowing what I know about Ritz and theirs, right now, we had a conference call a couple of days ago, the original schedule that we were looking at. We've allowed Ritz to say, by March 1st, they will have their grand opening. We're a little bit more optimistic as to what we're going to turn over. From a contractor's side, from our contractor that we hired, they're talking about being down to punch list the end of the year. And then it's a matter of Ritz-Carlton just being able to get in, you know, 200-plus employees in and trained as we turn over the spaces. Now, I can tell you that Ritz-Carlton has doubled in staff. We're about ready to move two new trailers out for them, but we basically kicked the contractor out of one of their trailers, and Ritz-Carlton's going to suffer through it for a couple more weeks before we can get them inside the building. And we're getting the phone system, PBX, all that backbone infrastructure for them to operate their day-to-day business will be in in two weeks, including the PBX. So this way, they can get some 300 phone lines into this place.
Thanks, John. We're all excited for you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that has a question of John? Okay, John, you made it through two months in a row now with no public comments.
Again, and my apologies again for showing up late, and I'm going to head back up to the hill and do what we do.
Good to see you. We look forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you very much. Pleasure.
Oh, John, you mentioned coming up next week. Are you planning a formal date and time, or should we just contact you individually or to come and visit?
Yeah, yeah. If you guys want to come up as a group, I mean, like I said, you're welcome individually anytime. Just give me, I'm up on site every day. So you give me morning, you call me in the morning, say, "Hey, we'll be up in an hour." You come up with one of the inspectors, the number of inspectors that have been up there. Always welcome.
Great.
Just pull me away.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation of a proclamation declaring October 6th through the 12th, 2013, as Fire Prevention Week. And I'd like to call forward Captain J. Ringhofer, if you would like to come forward. Thank you, Cindy. And bring the rest of your firefighters with you. Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you guys today. Who's putting out fires right now, huh?[644.66][644.66](laughter) Did all of you have to respond to the Ritz when, over the weekend, or?
Fire.
Oh, okay. Well, this week, let's see, the date again is, what is it, the 6th through 12th? So this is a proclamation that we're doing on behalf of you guys for the great work that you do, but also call to attention that this is a special week. And would you like to talk a little bit about what residents can do to protect their residents better, or whatever their business is?
I would love to. Our big push for this year is safety in the kitchen, dealing with the, if you have a fire inside your kitchen area. Most of our fires tend to be grease fires, and there's a lot of things that people do right and people that do wrong. Our biggest thing that we tell people is grease fires, don't put water on it. Cover the pan, use a dry chemical type extinguishers. Because what happens is, people attempt to use water to put it out, and we end up having somebody that gets burned. So that's our big safety push for this week is, you know, safety in the kitchen type. Know where your fire extinguishers are, smoke detectors, make sure they work. It's that time of year where we're going to have to test them again. Twice a year, we check them out. Every time we change the time, we check our smoke detectors and replace the batteries.
Okay, would you like to introduce the rest of your firefighters that are here today?
Okay, this is Captain Wharton Allen. He's from the South Ranch Mirage Station on Highway 111. Tom McBride is paramedic from the North Ranch Mirage Station. Kyle Lackey is a roving firefighter. He visits a lot of different stations. He's looking for a home, so if somebody wants to adopt him.[757.00][757.00](laughter) Lindy here, she actually works at the Palm Desert Station. She's filling in for somebody, as well as Mr. Garcia here, is a paramedic from Palm Desert Station. He's filling in for somebody also.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you all coming down today for this, and we appreciate you're out there every day, protecting all of the residents of Ranch Mirage. I know you do a great job, and we really appreciate everything you guys do for us. So on behalf of the City of Ranch Mirage, I'd like to present this proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, October 6th through the 12th. And on behalf of all of us at the city council and all the staff of the City of Ranch Mirage, we want to thank you for everything you do and look forward to another safe and sound prevention week. Thanks again for coming up here. Really gives me a pleasure to introduce our next presenter today. This is Isaiah Hagerman, who is the Finance Director, Finance Manager of our city. And he's going to be doing an announcement and presentation of the awards that the Finance Department recently received. So, Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is definitely one of the things that I look forward to most in my job. It's not very often that I get to recognize the hard work and dedication that the finance staff demonstrates every day, but this is one of those rare occasions where I get to come up and maybe embarrass them a little bit, but really recognize them for all their hard work. So what this award is, is the Government Finance Officers Association has an award program for financial reporting. So the City of Ranch Mirage annually issues an audited financial statement. And this program is optional, it's not mandatory. And what the association does is they really set best practices for governmental entities in financial reporting. And basically, what it equates to is you have to do a lot more work and show a lot more detail in your financial statements. And so for our June 30th, 2012 CAFER, which is our financial statements, we again received the GFOA Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And the city has over a 20-year history of getting this award on its financial statements. And really, it's a result of all the hard work of the staff, day in and day out, just doing a great job when they perform their duties. So I'm going to take a second and introduce them one by one. So at first, we have Anna Leon. Go ahead and stand for us, Anna.[955.04][955.04](applause) Anna is the first friendly face that you see when you come up to Finance. She runs our public counter for us. She's been with the city for about a year and a half, and in that year and a half, she has demonstrated just a great ability to run the public counter and work with the people that come in. And so, very happy to have Anna on staff. She does a great job. The next person that I'm going to introduce is Annie Sanfilippo. Annie is, has been with the city for over 28 years. So a great dedication and service to the city and to the residents. Having someone be here for 28 years in the same department at the same city, I think, is pretty special, and we rely a lot on her institutional knowledge. She also does a great job. She runs the payroll process here for the city. So over those 28 years, she's run approximately 800 payrolls. So we run payroll every two weeks, so it's a significant accomplishment. Great work.[1030.75][1030.75](applause) The next person that I'm going to introduce is Ted Stoner. Ted has been with the city for just over a year, and he has quickly proven himself to be a great worker. And we really look to him for some of the more key technical things that we do in the department. Ted is also primarily responsible for issuing checks every Friday, so all the vendors out there, they get your checks promptly. It's a thank you to Ted. Ted does a great job, and we look forward to his growth in our department.[1069.25][1069.25](applause) The next person I'm going to introduce is Rosie Bernal. Rosie is actually pretty new to the city, so hired within the last six months, and we were lucky enough to snatch her up. She has quickly shown that she can be a right-hand person to the accounting manager, and she deals a lot with the budget and reconciling the many various bank accounts that the city has. So very happy to have Rosie aboard.[1101.04][1101.04](applause) And the leader of the group down on the end there is Virginia Ortega. She is the accounting manager here for us.[1112.33][1112.33](laughter) Virginia has been with the city for over 15 years, and the story that I like to tell about Virginia is, when she started with the city, is she was at the beginning position in our department. And she has worked herself up through the department in 15 years to the accounting manager. And for me, I rely on her heavily, and I appreciate everything that she does for our department and for me. Without any of these people that you have just seen, the stuff that we do up here wouldn't happen. So, thank you, Virginia.[1150.04][1150.04](applause) And with that, Mr. Mayor, that is the Finance Department and a great group of people.
Okay. Virginia, I like your wave, you know.[1161.83][1161.83](laughter) Is this your Tournament of Roses wave? Okay. Well, it's great to have all of you here today on behalf of all the city council. We really appreciate all the work that you do. You make the city the finest city in the valley, and certainly the most financially secure. So I know a lot of the work that you do, you don't get all the appreciation you should, but we certainly look forward to working with all of you and look forward to next year. And certainly, Isaiah has brought you all together, and I think you're in a great department now. Isaiah, we have only had with us for a year and, how long now?
Just under a year.
Just under a year. Seems like a year and two years, whatever. But it was a great addition to our staff, has really brought our city onto a whole new accounting and financial wherewithal. So, Isaiah, we thank you for everything you're doing. Thank you for your staff. Again, you make Ranch Mirage really what it is. Thanks again.
Thank you.[1228.58][1228.58](applause)
Okay, the next presentation is going to be done by our Mayor Pro Tem, Iris Smotrich. Iris is going to recognize some of the volunteers from the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert. So Iris?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we were talking about volunteers and all the fine work that has been contributed to our city through the volunteer programming. I've often mentioned how, without our volunteers, cities would just not be the same, and we could not function the way we do, whether it's in our hospitals, or our libraries, or the colleges, the churches, the synagogues, wherever it might be, volunteers are the key personnel that make it really work. And sometimes they're underappreciated and certainly underpraised. So today, we have a fine group here today. We have six people who are going to come up, and their leader, Kim Hatton, who is their Director of Volunteers, is also here, and she will say a few words about the museum. But maybe they will meet me down there in just a minute, but I wanted to introduce them first. We have Priscilla Lawson, Sally Vedovitz, Barbara Black, Lorraine Petrovich, Cheryl Skiyaka, Gillian Ramjet, and Kim Hatton, their leader. So if you could meet me down in front, I'll bring the microphone, you can say a few words and smile pretty, because you're on television.[1330.54][1330.54](laughter) Okay. Well, is this a fine group, or what? All the, all the pretty gals? Okay, well, this is Kim Hatton, and she is their leader, and she puts together all the wonderful volunteers and the programs that they do. So why don't I give the microphone to you, and you can say a few words, and then we'll pass it down. And everyone will have an opportunity, should they wish to, to tell their names and why they decided to volunteer at the museum, and maybe a little bit about their family and their history, and why they came to the desert.
Okay. Well, this is not always my strong suit, so I brought a few notes, but I will be brief. My name, as she said, is Kim Hatton, and I'm the gallery manager, the volunteer coordinator, the camp director, and Mrs. Claus. Let me just start, just very briefly, by saying, unfortunately, the world we live in today is a very negative place for a lot of our children. They hear about this kind of thing from the adults and the media around them. The average school-aged child is in front of some kind of digital device, whether it's computer, TV, smartphone, seven and a half hours a day. When and where do they play? And that's where we come in. The museum, if you've never been there, has about 18,000 square feet of exploration and gallery and play areas. That includes 10,000 square feet of galleries. We have lots of things like toddler programs. We have over 60 exhibits. We have camps, field trips, special events, and classes. And this spring, we served our millionth guest. So we're very excited about that. Got to put the notes down here. Just a second. We also just want to say briefly that we're thankful for all the sponsors of the museum. Being a nonprofit, we're like lots of nonprofits. We need our sponsors, our wonderful people who donate, our wonderful cities who give us grants to help these programs continue. And they're very essential. We have programs everywhere from healthy eating and activities to very essential science and math. But above all these important dollars that we need and that we're fortunate enough to receive is our volunteers. They are such a priceless and vital part of the museum. We couldn't operate without them. And I'll try not to get emotional here, because this is a subject very close to my heart, but they are just, they are amazing. They give of their time. That's something you can't give back. You can't go make more, you can't earn more. Once it's given, it's gone. And fortunately for us, they choose to give it to the children and their families. Our volunteers have donated over 200,000 hours, and sometimes for statistical reasons, we try to calculate that, what that cash value would be. According to the state of California, that's over $5 million. But how do you put a price on something that's really priceless? These people give of their generous spirit, their wonderful and kind hearts, their experience, their skill, their friendship, their inspiration. They're, they're just a wonderful, wonderful group. At the museum, we have junior volunteers. Every summer, we have over 120 that help with the camp and the gallery programs. Their ages are 12 to 17. We have working adults who still find time, even though they hold full-time jobs. One of those is here today, that finds the time to still give us some hours every month. We have our corporate volunteers, our snowbirds, and our special events volunteers, like our Discovery Home Tour every year. We have 140 to 150 volunteers for that event alone. So without them, you can see that we couldn't, couldn't function at all. They make it all possible. And if you'll bear with me, I want to read just one of my favorite things, favorite short, short stories. You've probably all heard it before, but it's special. The starfish story. While walking along a beach, an elderly gentleman saw someone in the distance leaning down, picking something up and throwing it into the ocean. As he got closer, he noticed that the figure was that of a young man, picking up starfish one by one and tossing them gently back into the water. He came closer and said, "Good morning. May I ask what it is you're doing?" And the young man paused, looked up, and replied, "Throwing starfish into the ocean." The old man smiled and said, "I must ask, then, why are you throwing starfish into the ocean?" To this, the young man replied, "The sun is up, and the tide is going out. If I don't throw them in, they'll die." Upon hearing this, the elderly observer commented, "But, young man, do you not realize that there are miles and miles of beach, and there are starfish all along every mile? You can't possibly make a difference." The young man listened politely, then he bent down, picked up another starfish, and threw it back into the ocean, breaking past the waves and said, "It made a difference to that one." And these lovely, wonderful volunteers make a difference every day to one child, one family, one field trip, and many. They're just, we're very thankful for them. And it's your turn.
Hi, I'm Priscilla Lawson. I've lived here in the desert almost 14 years, and I've been a volunteer at the Children's Discovery Museum for almost seven. I started very gingerly assisting on the Discovery Home Tour, and discovered what fun that was. And the woman that was in charge of the home tour that year said, "Gee, Priscilla, you seem to have such a good time. Why don't you come down and help out at the museum?" And I thought, "Oh, my goodness, I don't know about that. My background isn't with children, it's with seniors, but maybe I could try." I said, "Well, I'm not sure." She said, "Well, now, now, just a minute." She said, "I think we have an opening on Thursday afternoon." "What are you doing Thursday afternoon?" And I said, "Uh, uh, well, I really don't have anything scheduled for Thursday afternoon." So she said, "Good, we'll see you at 1:00." And that was how I got started. And I have never, ever been sorry. I look forward to Thursday afternoons. I've been doing it, as I said, almost seven years, and my assignment is the gift shop. And it's the best place to be, and one of the happiest places to be. Thanks.
That's a hard act to follow, Priscilla.[1770.45][1770.45](laughter) Hi, everybody, I'm Barbara Black, and I've been a resident of Ranch Mirage for 15 years now. The early years of my residency, I did work in Palm Springs, and the last two years, I have been retired. First year retirement, kind of excited, what, I could do anything, I could sleep till 10 or 12 or whatever. The second year came upon me, and I was just kind of bored with that and thought, "I've got to do-" got to do something that I really, really love to do," and what is that? Well, we already had a dog, so I know my husband would say no to that one, and I thought, "I need to work with children." So sure enough, I went down and filled out an application, and lo and behold, guess who's there? Kim. At the front desk, and we spoke, and the next thing I knew, I started to volunteer. Actually, I work with the little ones, from age one and a half to two and a half, and I do that on Fridays with our teacher, whose name is Susanna. I love that, because that fills my void, I have a little grandson of the same age who lives in Hawaii. So other than going there and seeing him a couple of times a year, this really fills the void for me. I also help Susanna with other special events she may have with the tiny tots, and I work the front desk as well. I've only been with the organization for a year now, but I love it, and I think I found my home, so, thank you very much.
My name is LaRae Petrovich, and I'll make it short, because all of those are my reasons as well, but I have another one, and it's because I live in, at Mission Hills, and I've been living there for 13 years, I love it, but I really never see anybody younger than myself. So I really needed to get out and mix with people that are younger, and especially children. So I started to work at the museum a year ago, I've done the home tours, I work in the shop, and I work at the front desk, not brave enough to work with the actual children. I'd just like to look at them.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Shanka, I'm an RN with a master's in public administration, and my husband and I run our own healthcare consulting business. We've worked extensively and traveled extensively around the world, but for the past 12 years, we've lived here in the desert full-time, and I have been volunteering at the museum now for almost seven years. I work both at the gift shop and at the front desk, and it's just the perfect place for me. I love kids, and it allows me to meet and interact with kids and families from all over the community here, as well as all over the world. And the staff there is just so smiling, so personable, so supportive of the volunteers, and without their scheduling flexibility for me, I can't, I wouldn't be able to fit volunteering in without my work schedule as well. And besides all that, kind of like the others, the children's museums makes me smile. My little story is, at the front desk, there was this father and his son coming in to go and spend the day at the museum, and they were just going to do a daddy's day, and so I get them all checked in, and then the little boy, who's probably about five, comes up and goes, "Do you know, my daddy and I are wearing the same G.I. Joe underwear?" And I said, "Really?" So see, makes you smile.
Hi, my name is Gillian, I'm, work at the front desk, and I love working at the front desk, because I get to see all the kids come in, I see them laugh, I see them cry, they don't like leaving the museum at all, they spend at least four hours there, so it's amazing to see the kids enjoying the museum.
My name is Sally Vetovitz, and I don't think I'm going to be able to say what I was going to say. Anyway, thanks, I love my job.
Well, thank you all so much, you all have such delightful stories to tell, and it was a pleasure listening to you. We have a certificate of appreciation, and we will give one to each of you. We also have a little gift here, which is a little jar of cookies, so it'll add a little bit of sweetness to your sweet day. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've been on the Children's Discovery Museum Board for the last 13 years, and have seen the museum grow so much, and it's really due to the volunteers, as you heard, the number of hours that are volunteered. The museum could never afford to pay for all of these people, so they've really made the organization so worthwhile, and it's been a great time working with them. At this time, we're going to go to non-agenda public comments, and those are for individuals who would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda. You can fill out one of the yellow forms in the back and turn it into the city clerk, and we'd be happy to hear you speak for three minutes, and if you could give your name and address when you come up. To begin, though, I'd like to introduce Ted Wile, one of our councilmen, and Ted is going to introduce the guest speaker. So Ted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to introduce one of the stars of our city, and this is Mary Perry. Her official title is Deputy Director of Communications and Public Affairs, the Annenberg Retreat at Sunnylands. Mary's a good friend, and the Annenberg Retreat is one of the shining stars of our city, without a doubt. This asset perpetuates the title of Rancho Mirage being the home of the president, and indeed, it has been. Sunnylands has some very exciting programs, and when you look at their schedule, it appears that there's something going on almost every single day, and it's just thrilling, we are so proud to have it here, and Mary will tell you a little bit about the program. Mary, if you would.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, citizens of Rancho Mirage, I bring you greetings from Sunnylands. Ted's obviously and accurately presenting our schedule to you, we are very, very busy at Sunnylands. We, of course, welcome presidents of the United States, including our current president, and that's only one side of our story, that is our major story, the retreats, the high-level retreats that take place, that often take place without any of you knowing about them. We do try and tell you after the fact, but some of them, we don't even do that, so there's a lot going on there. But we also have a public side. The Annabergs, in addition to wanting Sunnylands to host high-level retreats, wanted it to be a place where the public could come and enjoy, to understand why the Annabergs left Sunnylands as a public trust, what happens there, what they did, why they did what they did. So we do have a full schedule of events, including the house tours, that of course, the tickets go on sale the first and 15th of every month, we sell 800 ticket, 800 tickets within minutes during season, a little bit longer during, like, September and October, but they still go pretty darn fast. We also have garden walks, we have bird walks, we have bird tours, we have just added, beginning in November, a landscape tour that will be of the estate, where you will go on the estate and learn about the trees and the plants, and the outside of the house, which is really fascinating. But I do want to mention a couple of upcoming events, and I did provide each of the council members and the staff before me with one of our programs, but there are a lot of them up here as well, for anyone who would want to take them. It is pretty much our calendar of events, although there may be some additions, and I do need to remind you that even though something is in print as a real event, should we have a request from the president, or a high-level retreat that needs to be responded to, a public event would be canceled. I want to specifically point out, this month, on October 17th, Sunnylands is participating in the Great California Shakeout, so if you're at Sunnylands on Thursday, October 17th, at 10:17 in the morning, be prepared to take part in the statewide drill for earthquakes. And we're very excited that the Emergency Preparedness Committee of the City of Rancho Mirage is partnering with us on that, and we look forward very much to having you on site that day. Also in October, we're introducing a brand-new program, and those are films on the Great Lawn. So you can come to Sunnylands on October 23rd to see Mr. Smith Goes to Washington, or you can come on November 13th and see The Last Emperor. And we're working with the Palm Springs International Film Festival on that program. The films will be previewed at 7:00 in the evening, you can begin accessing Sunnylands at 6:00, you can bring your small picnics, no alcohol with you, and a chair and a blanket, and please do come. So that's the specific programs in October, in addition to the tours and the walks that we normally have, and as I said, the film again in November. Starting in January, we go even more full-force, if we can go more full-force, and we have Third Sundays that begin in January, those are family days, we invite all ages, all members of your family, to come and have just a great time at Sunnylands, and of course, all of our events like that are free. We are working with the Rancho Mirage Public Library, thank you, David. We have a series of lectures that will begin in January, so please do look for those. We have a nightlife program that is for young, young folks in emerging careers, so we encourage the 20 and 30-year-olds to come to our nightlife programs, where we have early-career seminars, talks. And then we have another event coming up in April, that I know city council is certainly aware of, we're working with Rancho Mirage Cultural Commission on an event that will take place on Sunday, I don't remember, April, April 13th, I believe, is the day that we will be welcoming part of the week-long, is it a week-long, four-day, week-long event celebrating culture in Rancho Mirage, and we will be hosting the culminating event on early Sunday evening. So we invite you, we do believe that Sunnylands belongs to the people and to the community, we are proud that we are in Rancho Mirage, and we're here for you, and if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
Mary, it's nice to have you here, once the president's coming back.
Well, you know, we expect him, he had a wonderful time, so I do certainly expect him, probably not in the, a next week or so.
Oh, okay.
I think they're a little busy there right now, or not.
Or not.
Yeah, or not, but we are definitely expecting the president to return.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for having me, and thank you so much for your support. Every single one of you I know well and consider to be friends of Sunnylands as well as mine, so thank you.
Mary, at the United Way event last week?
Yeah.
You did a phenomenal job organizing that, you and your team?
Thank you.
And the Desert Sun folks, so thank you so much for all your wonderful hospitality.
Thanks so much.
I also want you to know that you make an excellent case for human cloning. If I could bottle you up and carry you in my pocket everywhere I go, I would love to do that.
Well, Scott, now I'm taking you with me. Thank you very much, that was very kind, thanks.
The only problem there, Scott, is that Mary's pocket isn't large enough to fit all of us in it.
That's right.
Because we all feel the same way.
Absolutely.
Mary, thank you so much.
Thank you, I'll see you again in another month.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Ted. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on any items that are not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, request, we will now move on to city council and board member comments. Would you like to start, Scott?
Sure, I just had one quick announcement, I wanted to remind the public that coming up on October 19th is the AIDS Walk, this is one of the premier fundraisers for the Desert AIDS Project, and I would encourage you to come out and support the efforts to get rid of this horrible disease. You can learn more about that at desertaidsproject.org, and it's on October 19th, and come out and walk, good exercise and a great cause.
Yes, thank you. Ted?
Yes, the, this, this month, from now through the end of October, is the Great Food, Great Value Restaurant Rendezvous in Rancho Mirage. There is 20% off a list of a number of wonderful restaurants, you can get these cards in the lobby of the city hall, and at the library, if I'm not mistaken, and it's just a terrific promotion, very well-received, please take advantage of it, it's available now.
Thank you. Iris? Okay, it gives me a lot of pleasure today to announce the dates and the speakers for the upcoming speaker series, and the speaker series will begin on January 29th with Ashley Judd speaking, then on March 19th, we're going to have the Bush Daughters, Barbara Pierce Bush and Jenna Hager, speaking on March 19th, and then on February 19th, we're going to have DeeDee Myers, who used to work in the White House as the press consultant to the president. So we've got DeeDee Myers, we've got the Bush Daughters, and Ashley Judd, and then as the special speaker, not part of the series, but will be also speaking during that period of time, will be Jackie Collins, who will speak on Saturday, January 18th, and as part of the Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival. So we would recommend that if you'd like to go see the speakers, you get your tickets as soon as possible, the first day for ticket sales will be October 15th, you have to do them online, you cannot pick them up here at city hall, so you need to go into ranchomarageca.gov, that's ranchomarageca.gov, and the tickets are $150 for preferred seating, that's for the three series, or $60 individually, and if you just want general admission seating, it's $120 and $45 per individual. So remember, get your tickets, October 15th, online, ranchomarageca.gov. And let's see, city manager, Randy, will you have a comment?
Ready for the consent calendar.
Okay. All right, we'll now move on to the minutes, and then I'll get to the consent calendar. Can I have an approval for a motion to approve the minutes of September 16th?
Two more.
Which is our special meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. And the motion carries for zero with one absent. We'll now move on to the consent calendar, and as you will recall, the consent calendar is a series of items that can be approved with one blanket motion, and if anybody has an interest in pulling one of those issues for further discussion, if you would let me know, either council or the public. Seeing no hands raised, no pulling of motions or of items, we'll now move on to the city manager, Randy Binder, who will discuss the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Today's consent calendar consists of four items. Item number one on your calendar is a request that the city council approve a service provider's waiver for automobile subrogation rights against the city. This is a contract with Desert Publications, which is a subsidiary of Palm Springs Life Magazine, this is our marketing manager's consultant that works on the Rancho Mirage Insider and the Rancho Mirage Magazine. In negotiating this contract, they've agreed to the insurance subrogation related to general liability and workers' compensation, but their insurance carrier will not sign off on the automobile component of the insurance. So while the city standard service provider agreement was used as a template for the contract in your, in your book today, the auto requirements really apply to public works-type projects where physical labor and commercial vehicles are used. Frank Jones and Desert Publications has this contract with the city, it's more of, for lack of a better term, an artsy-fartsy type of contract, this is a one that's required...
Is that a technical term?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's not a physical contract. They sit at their desk, they prepare these great reports for us, they transmit them electronically. So if we, the point I'm trying to make here is that if we require this type of insurance contract, they really would pass the cost on to us, and it would increase our, our costs, so I'm recommending that we waive the auto subrogation requirement and execute the contract.
You have to be a scientist in order to present that kind of an agenda item.
We've also, our other clients have also agreed to waive the same requirement in their contracts with Desert Publications.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Okay, item number two on your agenda is a request for a mid-year budget adjustment to cover the cost of a local matching grant, we received a grant, the public... We received a grant, the Public Works Department, Bruce Harries, received a grant from Caltrans for $263,000 to replace, or excuse me, add LED streetlights along Highway 111 from Mirage Cove to the West City Limits and from Paxton Road down to the Eastern City Limits. And this would be a budget adjustment to come from the license tax fund in the amount of $29,000. That would be our share, and then we could use the grant funds of $263,000. And I think, Sarah, do you have an aerial that shows the location of those lights? Is there anything, Bruce, that you wanted to mention to the Council as part of this? I think this is a great project.
Yeah. What you're seeing, the red dots on the aerial resemble the new streetlights. They're put at 150-foot on centers, and they're alternating one side of the street to the other, so that'll provide adequate roadway lighting for vehicles. And sometimes you even get bicyclists that tend to ride at night, and even pedestrians that could be out there. So this is a safety grant that we got through Caltrans to help improve traffic safety on 111. We do have some accident history on 111, so we hope this streetlighting project will assist with motor or sub, be able to see median curbs and things such as that at night. The green dots are existing traffic lights, or actually, I'm sorry, existing streetlights that are attached to our traffic signals. So you see the green dots, those are signalized intersections. So we're going to be completing the balance of 111, except for the stretch that's between Paxton and Country Club, which is a very residential, it's the golf course area, very green with Thunderbird on both sides, and we didn't feel any need to have anything in there because we typically don't have a problem in that area. But this is a great project, and I would request that the Council approve these funds so we can get these improvements in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then item number three are your purchase orders and contracts. Item number four, demands, and we're here to answer any questions. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Is there anybody in the audience that has a question or a comment on the consent calendar? If not, can I have a motion, please?
Move approval of the consent calendar?
No, second half.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. And the motion carries for zero with one absent. We'll now move on to the next portion of the meeting, which is the public hearing portion. And we'll begin with item number five, which is the consideration of a resolution number 2013, next in order, approving and adopting the Rancho Mirage greenhouse gas inventory, et cetera, et cetera. And Bud Cop, Planning Manager, are you going to discuss this, Bud?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor Kite, and good afternoon, Council members. Since 2009, Rancho Mirage has been a partner with the Coachella Valley Association of Governments and other Coachella Valley cities as part of SEVAG's Desert Cities Energy Partnership. Back in 2011, SEVAG developed a green government initiative on behalf of the member jurisdictions to promote energy efficiency, green building and sustainability, with funding received from Southern California Edison and the California Public Utilities Commission. Through this initiative, the Green for Life program was established, which is a comprehensive suite of voluntary energy and sustainability tools available to the city. This Green for Life program has been developed over the past two years with input from city officials, staff, and community stakeholders. We held an open house back in December of 2011 here at the city. Presentations were made before the City Council in November 2011 and July of 2012. A study session was held with the Planning Commission last summer, and we also held three meetings with the Sustainability Subcommittee to discuss development of these plans. Our former Council member, Gordon Moeller, provided comments early in the plan's development. And I'd also like to thank Councilman Hines and Councilman Wile for their feedback in developing these documents as well. The items for consideration this afternoon include the greenhouse gas inventory, the Rancho Mirage Sustainability Plan, and the Energy Action Plan. By adopting these voluntary documents, it would provide the city with a roadmap to achieve the state-mandated greenhouse gas reductions by the year 2020. Rancho Mirage already demonstrates leadership in efforts to improve energy efficiency and livability and promotes the wise use of city resources. A couple of examples of that would be the energy-efficient chiller installed at the library, the recently-approved solar-ready ordinance, participation in the upcoming PACE program, and energy retrofits at City Hall, just to name a few examples. This Green for Life was designed to provide the city with tools to reach our sustainability goals as mandated by the state under Assembly Bill 32 and Senate Bill 375, as well as find ways to cut energy costs and provide opportunities for residents, businesses, and community members to save money as well. The plans not only identify ways to save energy and money, but also make the city and our residents eligible for higher rebates and incentives from the utility providers. It also provides a significant boost to valley-wide efforts to achieve energy independence, find energy cost reductions, and in turn have more local revenue for our local projects and services. Contained in your agenda package this afternoon, the 2010 greenhouse gas inventory serves as the baseline, which we will measure emission reduction progress in future years. The inventory measures the amount of energy, fuel, and water used, and waste generated within our city limits, and calculates the number of metric tons of greenhouse gases that result from those activities. Emission reduction targets were determined using the results of this greenhouse gas inventory, as well as the requirements by state law. The second part of your three-ring binder that includes the Sustainability Plan provides a blueprint or roadmap on how the city can reach the reduction targets identified in the first element in the binder, which is the greenhouse gas inventory. Emissions reduction measures are presented in eight separate focus areas. How we build, where we work, how we get around, are just a few examples of those measures. The actions contained in the Sustainability Plan focus on low-hanging fruit and cost-effectiveness of the various programs. Opportunities for job creation have been identified and woven throughout the Sustainability Plan. The proposed measures build on actions already taken by the city, including use of alternative fuel vehicles, energy-efficient lighting, and solar-ready efforts. Some of the examples of greenhouse reduction measures in the Sustainability Plan that the city could implement include promoting shade trees and new construction to reduce heat islands or to offset the cost of air conditioning bills, exploring public-private partnerships for renewable energy installations and energy-efficient upgrades on municipal facilities, and promoting comprehensive pool efficiency, including variable-speed pool pumps. The last element in your binder is the Energy Action Plan, which is a roadmap that describes a range of strategies to reduce energy demand, improve efficiency, and transition to renewable energy sources at city-owned and operated facilities. The Energy Action Plan describes current energy use at the city facilities and describes way the city can cut energy consumption, energy costs, and also how the city can benefit from higher levels of incentives by the utility providers. The Energy Action Plan is divided into two separate policies. The first is benchmarking, which will give the city tools to monitor and improve our own energy performance for municipal buildings and compare our municipal buildings to other municipal buildings within our same climate zone. And the second part is commissioning and retrocommissioning policy that applies to new and existing buildings and equipment to ensure proper operation of major equipment. The focus of this policy is on improving and tuning up how building equipment and systems function together. And as you may recall, last July, the City Council adopted the Voluntary Green Building Program. Nicole Christ is in attendance with Terra Nova, and you may recall seeing her last July to present that project. The Council approved that, and we're currently assembling information on potential incentive programs that the city could offer to promote energy efficiency and green building in relation and how the voluntary program relates to the other programs for your consideration today. The programs and incentives we eventually choose to implement will first be reviewed by the Sustainability Subcommittee prior to moving them forward to final, for final consideration by the Council. To implement these elements and measures in the Sustainability and Energy Action Plans, there will be costs and savings that vary for each action taken. Adoption of the Sustainability and Energy Action Plan and the policies contained in this document before you today do not by themselves commit any city funds. If this blueprint is adopted, our approach would be to recommend implementation of the measures which are easiest to achieve, the low-hanging fruit, so to say. And that would include staff developing certain policies or ordinances for Council consideration that are contained in the Sustainability Plan. And a second-tier approach might be to consider establishing some incentives to businesses or residents to offset, for example, permitting costs. The Sustainability Subcommittee will help staff develop and fine-tune an implementation plan and possible incentive schedule for final Council consideration later this year or as a part of future budget discussions. Associated with this project, staff completed an initial study in compliance with CEQA. We are recommending and mitigate, we're recommending a negative declaration is appropriate for CEQA clearance. Staff is recommending adoption of the negative declaration and the 2010 greenhouse gas inventory, Sustainability Plan, and the Energy Action Plan. I would like to introduce Katie Barrows, who's the Director of Environmental Resources with SEVAG, and she would like to give a brief update on valley-wide implementation, and specifically the PACE program, which is one of the measures contained in your Sustainability Plan. And following her update, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Bud. Welcome, Katie. It's nice to have you with us today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it very much, the opportunity to be here, and we certainly appreciate the consideration by the City Council of the plans and tools that Bud has described. And I definitely want to appreciate the tremendous support we've received from your staff and Council in putting these plans together. We're really pleased to be at this point. I just wanted to highlight briefly, as Bud described, I think one of the things that is great news about the plans that we're presenting to you, the Energy Action Plan and the Sustainability Plan, is you've already made a lot of progress toward achieving some of those goals. There is, as Bud described, a kind of a pathway towards achieving both energy conservation here at City Hall and cost savings associated with that, as well as greenhouse gas reductions. And the city, with your recently-adopted solar-ready ordinance, the green building program, you have Section 19 plan that proposes a transit-oriented development model, which is progressive for the Coachella Valley and a great example for the rest of our cities. We are at SEVAG working on an electric vehicle readiness plan, a plug-in electric vehicle readiness plan. Bud participates as a member of our Technical Advisory Committee, and that will hopefully help the city move towards having more charging stations and facilities to encourage not only other alternative vehicles, but electric vehicles. I've already just heard this afternoon about the lighting project that is going on for LED lighting, so that's going to result in energy savings and greenhouse gas emission reductions. And additionally, we are working with Bruce and his department on an energy management system with LA County that will allow the city to monitor energy use, and we're hearing that the savings from that kind of program can be significant, both energy savings as well as cost savings. So we're hoping to find that to be the case here at City Hall. One of the things Bud mentioned is the benchmarking policy that the Council is being asked to adopt today as part of the Energy Action Plan. And we did an evaluation of your City Hall, and we are looking now at the potential for it to qualify as an Energy Star building. We also are working with Southern California Edison and the Gas Company to provide a new energy audit of City Hall, so basically looking at what are all of the current energy-using elements, and what kinds of things could be done to advance your energy and cost savings at City Hall. And we hope to be doing that sometime within the next six months. I also wanted to remind the city that you continue to support and achieve energy savings, and through the Desert Cities Energy Partnership, there's something called the Energy Leader Program. The city, last month, qualified for the silver level of that energy leadership, which means you have saved more than 6% on your energy use here at City Hall since 2006. And actually, Southern California Edison hopes to return here sometime in the next month or so to present a recognition of the Council's efforts with regard to that program. Briefly, I wanted to update, as Bud said, on our PACE program, what we're now calling CV Upgrade. We appreciated the early support from the City of Rancho Mirage, Councilman Hines, at the time, as mayor, participated in our efforts to move that program forward. And we are getting ready to launch. We do have a legal proceeding that we need to finish up, and we're in the midst of that right now. But at the same time, we're getting ready to launch the program. We are anticipating having some workshops for contractors later this month, at the end of the month, and we'll be announcing those. We've just sent your staff a link to a website, a splash page. Interested folks can go to that. It's at cleanenergycvupgrade.com, and that will have a place where people can register and find out about this program and receive updates, so that when we are ready later this year to actually provide funding to property owners for energy efficiency, solar, they will be ready to go. So we're kind of in a preparation stage, but we're excited about that. And we're certainly interested, if there's an interest on your part, to have us come and provide some information about the program to staff, or find ways which we can outreach to your community. We want to be sure to do that. We'd like to make sure we make that program fit to the needs of the Rancho Mirage community. So with that, I really just want to recognize and appreciate the efforts that your city continues to make, and also identify that you've made some progress. So while the list might look somewhat significant in terms of these plans, there's already some great things underway that will help to achieve those goals. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Katie. Are there any questions before we open up the public hearing?
Just a quick comment. Katie, you've done such a fantastic job, and Bud, you as well. I mean, this is a Herculean effort. I mean, this report is not something you just knock out in a week. I mean, this has been a long time in the works, and I just really, really appreciate your leadership here in the Valley as a whole. I work with you on the Subcommittee over there, the Commissioner over there at SEVAG, and I just, I know how much work has gone into this, and as well as with our consultants and all the work that you all have done, too. So it's a monumental effort, and it's a promise kept. I remember being at the Energy Conference in 2009, 2008, when I think Gordon Moeller was maybe mayor and signed the mayor's pledge, along with a lot of the Valley mayors, that we would really move forward on this. And it's awesome to see this come to fruition, but the work still continues. I mean, there's a lot to implement here, and I look forward to continuing to work with you on the future. But thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you've done. And also, just for everyone's benefit, this was presented at the conference that I went to back in China in May on sustainability. And so this is making the rounds in other areas. I just heard a couple of weeks ago, in fact, from one of the folks that I met there, had a question about something in here, so they're reading it. And that's pretty amazing that a little town like ours is having an impact on the other side of the planet. So anyway, kudos to you. I appreciate the nice things that you said about the work the Subcommittee done, but the work, the real work in the trenches was done by your team and by our planning folks. Bud, well done, great job, and now let's go and use this as a place to continue improving. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your kind words. It's a pleasure. I do actually, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, if I might just very briefly, because I remembered actually something that was requested by the Sustainability Committee. We are also working on a green building app, which I think I've spoken about before. We're hoping to have that by the first of the year, which would be a tool that property owners can use. Go online, make it simple, find ways that they can save money. And I also do want to remind folks that tomorrow is our Fifth Annual Energy Summit, which, as Councilman Hines just mentioned, was started some years back and has been a tremendous effort, I think, in elevating the Coachella Valley. So, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate you being here today. And at this point, I'll open up the public hearing. And as I open the public hearing, I just want to note that Councilman Hobart is now in attendance. Welcome, Dana.
Thank you.
You made it, in spite of everything, I'm sure.
It was difficult, but you made it.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address this issue? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any Council comments, questions? Okay, could I?
You know, I really just want to echo one thing that Scott said. The one thing I like is this will establish a baseline whereby improvement can be measured, and I think that's the critical thing, that when these programs are instituted, we can actually see the results and measure the success. And at this point, adopting this costs the city, as Bud said, no money. And at this point, adopting this costs the city, as Bud said, no money. It merely means that we're prepared to go ahead with individual programs as they're submitted to the council.
Thank you, Ted.
May I just add one comment? I would say that, to me, the best thing about this program is that it puts all the cities on roughly the same path. And for a long time, we've engaged in situations where Rancho Mirage or Palm Desert may be leading the pack on a variety of energy-related issues, and nobody else is or nobody else has the same standards. And I think this gives guidance to all councils and will eventually bring a lot of uniform progress. And I also thank the Committee for its hard work and CVAG for its supreme diligence on this issue.
Thank you, Dana. Any other comments, questions? Can I have a motion? We have two items we need to adopt here.
All right. I will move that the City Council adopt a negative declaration of environmental impact and, number two, adopt the Rancho Mirage Sustainability Plan with associated 2010 Greenhouse Gas Inventory Rancho Mirage Energy Action Plan with associated energy benchmarking policy and procedures for municipal buildings in the City of Rancho Mirage and commissioning and retro commissioning policy for municipal buildings in the City of Rancho Mirage, following a notice public hearing thereon.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's a motion, the second. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much, and thank you, Katie. I think certainly you've done a great job in leading the valley forward on this whole issue, and we hope to work with you in the future. Okay, we'll now move on to item number six, which is the Assignment and Assumption Agreement for the Assignment of Solar Power Purchase Agreement by and between the city and Nobel Energy Solutions. And this is going to be discussed by you, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Steve Cantona, our city attorney.
Okay, well, speaking of energy, we have another energy issue here to deal with. You just, your last meeting, the city council approved the solar power purchase agreement with Nobel Energy Solutions. And since that time, it's the Nobel Energy Solutions has requested that we consent to having that agreement assigned to a newly-formed entity that's been formed specifically for this project, and that entity is known as Rancho Mirage Power Partners 1 LLC. It's a limited liability company. And we just, I just found out today that was the name, and Fred is here. And Fred, if you have any questions about who the members are going to be, you can ask Fred. But our recommendation is that, is that if the council is inclined to approve this assignment, that we require Nobel to be a managing partner or managing member of that LLC for at least the first five years. If, the assignment will also require them to enter into an Assignment and Assumption Agreement wherein the assignee, the newly-formed entity, will assume all the legal obligations, provide all the insurance, and meet all the requirements set forth in the agreement. So nobody's going to get off the hook for anything.
Are we to assume that you've already discussed that with Nobel and that they are in agreement with these issues, or is this something remaining to be discussed?
No, Fred, why don't you come forward and you can ask him.
Well, I know I could ask him. I wanted to ask you.
Yeah, no, yes, we already agree with.
Okay.
Well, first of all, let me apologize that I'm in shorts in front of you. You all look so officious there, and I was out.
How dare you come to this meeting in informal address?
I was out pulling our business licenses, and I happen to be here, so we were pulling business licenses. This is a tax issue.
Fred, would you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, I apologize. My name is Fred Bell. I am a partner in Nobel Energy, and we are the company that is building your solar facilities. What happened here was we got so involved in the minutia, both sides, in getting the PPA done, that we didn't look at who our legal caught that Nobel was on the PPA. All of our, our facilities are in LLCs because of the federal tax credit requirement and the assignment of that requirement to passive income. Without getting too far into inside baseball and watching everybody lapse into a coma, the federal tax credit, the way it applies, has to be applied to passive income, and so the members have to have a clear path to be able to do that. That is the reason that they're all in LLCs. So Nobel will be the manager of the LLC, and we will have an equity position in the LLC. But Nobel in and of itself isn't the entity that's taking the tax credit. It is the partners within Nobel that are taking the tax credit, which is why it has to be set up that way. I've done the 1603 grant, which was the cash grant portion of this that expired a year ago, and I've done the tax credit portion of this. And we don't want any ambiguity within the structure of the PPA that allows the federal government to tell us, well, by the way, you can't take the 30% tax credit, because the tax vehicle is a major portion of this, this deal. That's what makes it work. And so it would be, it would be an immediate red flag for the feds if we had it structured the way it was. And it was merely a case of, we all got so involved in the minutia of finalizing the PPA, that when we got down to it, our legal said, wait a minute, it's not the, the LLC, the Rancho Mirage Power Partners. We have Xavier Power Partners LLC, we have Sacred Heart Powers Partner LLC. That's where they go to live. So we will be the managing member for five years.
Had we known this at the time, we would have, we would have listed Rancho Mirage Power Partners. So you guys informed that back in March or?
Right. The entity for this, we formed it as soon as it became clear that we were going to do the deal. What happened was, as I said, the two legal entities were so focused on some of these issues way down in the minutia of the PPA, that quite frankly, they just missed it. And we caught it and said, wait a minute, we have the LLC that's been sitting here for seven months, or whatever it was, that we've been talking, that we knew we were going to build it, and that's the problem. So this mechanism resolves that, that issue.
At this point, we don't know who those other partners are, is that correct?
It will be equity partners within Nobel, and then there could be other tax partners that have, that we work with, that have tax appetite in the deal, but we are the managing member of the LLC. And this is not a sale, to be clear. This is not a sale of the LLC. This is not an assumption to another corporation. It, we're parking the tax credits in the LLC, but what I'm not telling you is, is a brown bag company is going to come in and you don't see me anymore, you see some other company. This is merely a tax cleanup issue that we, we quite frankly, got tangled around the axle with.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Steve, do you have any further comments on this?
No, I just, I have no objection to it. As I said, if, had we known that this was the LLC we were dealing with, we would have just inserted that name in the agreement. And we just have to bring it back formally for the assignment, because we're legal, we have to formally assign it to this new entity.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, city attorney? Dana, are you okay?
Yeah. Motion.
Yeah, please.
Okay, I would move that the city council approve the Assignment and Assumption Agreement for Assignment of Solar Power Purchase Agreement by and between the city and Nobel Energy Solutions LLC and the related site lease agreements, subject to finalization and approval as to form by the city attorney.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second. Before we go to vote, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item? It is not already. Okay, thank you. We'll now go to the vote, please. And the motion carries five-zero. Okay, we'll now move on to item number seven, and I believe, Kim, are you going to be discussing this?
I'll give the brief, excuse me, I have a frog in my throat, brief introduction and a little example, and then we'll go on.
Okay.
But thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At your September 16th meeting, the direction was given to have Jay Jenkins of Palm Springs Video conduct a lighting analysis of the existing lighting in the chambers and provide his analysis back to council as early as today. A written report has been provided and distributed to the council members. He is also here to present his findings. But first, in response to the mayor's suggestion at that meeting, Bill Oppenheim and his group installed additional lighting in the tracks, and if it pleases the council, we'd like to show you a before and after.
We'd love to see a before and after. Go to it.
What are we doing?
On the left is the before of Sarah's presentation on the 16th, and on the right was a capture of her sitting at the diocese yesterday, after the additional lighting was installed.
So today, the lights that were now under, are those the, the lights that you inserted over the last couple of days? Okay. Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Sarah. Let's, at this time, ask Jay to come forward. Jay, if you would like to come forward and give us a little bit of an overview of your presentation that you did for the city regarding the lighting and kind of fill us in and then answer any questions we might have.
Well, I think that what they've done, as I was sitting there in the audience, looks like it's quite an improvement. However, the example that I saw with Sarah probably wasn't the best example they could have used, because some of you are remarkably.
Can you speak into the microphone more, Jay?
Sure, I'm sorry, Dan.
Thank you.
Some of you are lit much better than you have been before. But again, the biggest problem is this set of lights immediately above you. That's what's creating most of the problem. Those lights need to move out here, so that it's lighting your faces from the front as opposed to the top of your heads. When you look down, as I, I'm pretty sure I'm shadowed here, I can't see myself because I'm looking down, but anytime you drop your head, you're lost out of the shot. The second part of that big problem is that the cameras were moved to the rear of the room. That's bad television. That's bad communication. When someone on this side or this side of the room is speaking in, or you're speaking to each other, we get nothing but the side of your face. You're not lit from this side, so that you're well-lit. Right now, if you look this way, all of you over there, including Sarah, are really nicely lit, because you're getting advantage of all of this. But from out there, and the television audience, doesn't see what you see from up here. So the object is to get as many lights as far this way as we can and drop down as low as we can to be able to light the front of your faces, so that when you dip your head slightly, we still can see who it is under that, the hair or the shining head, whatever it happens to be. So that's the objective, and there are just a million different ways to do it. And I'm here as a resident of the city now to suggest that we do it the least expensive way it can be done. And I would like to get rid of the highlight on Ted's face, where when you look at the video, you'll see that the entire face is washed out, it's bright white. In the video, it will be. And other areas, Scott is in a real dark hole over there now. I'm sure you're enjoying not being in that real bright spot of the mayor's spot, but over there, you're, you're not lit properly. It's, it's much too low. So what they've done is a remarkable improvement, but it still needs some consistency. That has to be left up to you. I've taken, what I, my approach was, was to find out, because one company, as I heard on the thing, on the last meeting, had mentioned that they wanted you, the city, to do some work, to get things ready for them. And that work was, I'm sure, was electrical. And I've offered a local company that could do that electrical work by installing the power in the ceilings that would be required if we used, if we went to LED lighting. And I'm recommending 10, 1,000 LED lights, which would bathe the diocese in white light and at daylight temperature as opposed to a lower Kelvin temperature that makes things red. And I know that, Richard, you've commented to me that things look red, and what can I do about it? Well, we'll change the temperature of the light, and that'll solve the problem. We'll get natural colors. The clothes you wear will look like the clothes you wear, the color they are. And I think that'll go a long way to help in solving that problem. And I am also recommending that the city would buy or have the electrician buy the lights from an importer, and that the only control that would be necessary would be set from his scissor lift to, to set the, the actual brightness of each spot on the diocese, so that the lighting would be consistent, and there would be no way to change it once the scissor lift came down. So.
All right. What would be, what would be the expense of doing, adding that last part, doing it right now, once and for all, rather than makeshift changes on a frequent basis?
Yeah, as I said, the contractor, the electrical contractor, his expense is about $1,000 a day. It's actually $1,000 a day, was his, what he told me. And he estimated it'd take him two days to do it, and I, on my proposal, said that it looked like it would be safe to put down three days, and that the cost of the lights can vary depending on what kind of requirements you actually have to have. But I gave you the price on the lowest ones that are available today, and they have 10 of them in stock and could ship them. I think we should take a slower approach at doing that to make sure, just to be prudent, to buy one light and make sure it's got the throw we want and the color we want, and if there's anything wrong, I'll buy the light from the city. He is in my business.
And if, if we entered into an agreement with, is that the?
Bill Bradley is the electrical company.
Bradley, is that it?
Bradley Electric.
If the city entered into an agreement with him, would you be in a position to ensure that your input got into his work product?
Yes. And, and in the conclusion of my report, I said that if you would like for me to follow it through to conclusion and installation of the product, to be sure that it gets put in properly, I'd be happy to do that.
And so you see that the bill for that would be something under $10,000?
If we use the least expensive lights, yeah.
And if we ended up requiring more expensive lights, what?
Well, the worst-case scenario I found was the Drake, Drake Cast, as you'll find on your report. Those were the most popular on amazon.com, which I buy a lot of my stuff from amazon.com. And they can be returned in 30 days if we bought them and brought them in here and they didn't work. We could simply send them back and get all of our money back.
And so the additional expense, if you had to go through two or three or four more light efforts, different types of lights, the expense of that wouldn't be, we had to buy each of the lights every time, but you would be able to turn them back?
Yeah, we could use every single light we purchased if it wasn't good.
And then settle on what's best.
One way or the other, and settle on what's best and then, and finish out that way, yeah. I would want to test them all, because it's, it's just not a good idea to buy 10 lights that are going to be very difficult to take back until you know what one light will do.
Good point.
They're, they're all rated, but they're all imported from China, almost. All, I have not, I haven't found one that isn't a Chinese import, and that's just simply where they can make them economically. And different companies stamp their thing on the back, and when they order them, they order them with different things that allow you to control them from a location. They will give you mix of Kelvin temperatures, and they'll even give you a mix of different bulbs, so that you can bathe it in red or bathe it in blue. There's no need for that here in the council. Perhaps over in the library someday, there may be. But at this point, we just need a good, pure, white light that is an inexpensive unit that, should it ever burn out, will be inexpensive to replace as well.
And is maintenance expense, anything significant once we?
Not that I, not that I was able to determine from any of my sources. It's, it would, it says that every single bulb in there is replaceable, but I couldn't find anywhere where it said how long they lasted. They do, they do use 60 watts per 1,000 lights, so that should prove, prove to be a significant savings. I don't know what these lights are, outside of halogen lights, and I don't, I'm not, I didn't do any work on that at this point, but.
But under this proposal, Bradley Electric would do all the work. But under this proposal, Bradley Electric would do all the work, the city wouldn't be required to do part of it, wouldn't have any liability or responsibility for any of that work.
Right. And your, the contract would be with Bradley Electric.
And you would have an arrangement with him?
And I, well, you're paying me...
If we did that, we'd be paying you $1,000, as I recall.
You're paying me $1,000, and that's my, where I come from. So if you want my business brought into it, and my insurance and all that, then we'll have to renegotiate. But if you contract with Bill Bradley and his company, then that won't be an issue.
And you're suggesting that would be enough?
I'm suggesting that would probably be the smartest way, yeah.
Jay, in regard to the lights that are now installed, are you essentially saying we take those lights out and we start over with what you're recommending?
Well, if you choose to do that, I mean, to solve the problem, it's, I think city staff showed that they have the ability to make it a whole lot better. And if you decide you want to spend that $10,000 to $15,000 right now, then, then that's the thing to do. It will make it better. It'll make it television better. But if we move, if they move these back that way, it's going to be an enormous improvement. It's going to get rid of the problem, one problem, and add to, you know, add to, as a positive, back to what the current situation is. And all you have is just the labor of moving them back.
So is your proposal to move the lights back or totally do something different?
My proposal is to go with the new lighting system.
I see, okay.
No, you're saying that there's a quick fix that would cost about $3,050. And if I'm reading your page, page two of your...
I misread that. I don't know what it's going to cost, I don't know what it's going to cost Bill to move these lights back and set them up. I just don't have any idea what, I mean, I'm speaking of your bill.
Yeah.
Bill Oppenheim. I don't know what...
So the difference in the cost from the illustration you gave us of $9,000 to $15,000?
Was just the difference of a lighting company and their lights.
And the cost of the lights or the...
The cost of, the actual cost of the lights.
As we find out which ones are more appropriate for this location?
Yeah. I have to, I have to believe that the ones I recommended, which were, excuse me, the least expensive, will probably be just exactly the same as the other ones. But we have to get them in. I have to get one in my hands and find out.
When you say same as the other ones, the same as these?
Well, I mean, same as the more expensive ones.
I see, okay. Okay, so basically, you're saying you could do the whole job as you proposed here for $9,000 or close to it?
Close to it, yeah. And perhaps if Bill Bradley was right, it's going to be, his charges would be, would knock $1,000 off that right off the top. So I don't think he can do it in two days. But if he can, good for him.
Questions down here? Scott?
I have a few. Hi, Jay. Thanks for coming today. I really appreciate it. Just a couple of questions for you. You're kind of facilitating the role of a consultant to us, I guess, as sort of an expert in the field of videography. And you, tell me the name of your company again?
Palm Springs Video.
Palm Springs Video. And what is Palm Springs Video? Do you do like weddings and all kinds of different events?
I started doing weddings. I do live switch television.
Live switch?
Live switch television. Just exactly what's happening, what Josh is doing right now.
Oh, I see.
That's part of my business. The second part of my business, I am the archive for all of the television stations here in the Coachella Valley. So...
Archiving work, like working at a con...
I maintain all of their archive files out of my business. I record, I record off-air, which, which if they were to be in a legal situation, that would be required of them to get an independent copy of what was broadcast, and that's what I provide.
Okay. I was looking through your report and trying to kind of understand it. It looks like you kind of Googled on Amazon and found lights on Amazon. Is that your intention, is to purchase the lights through amazon.com?
No, I'm going to purchase the one, the LA thing isn't on Amazon. I saw them at NAB, and then I found them on the internet because I hadn't picked up one of their brochures. But they're just an importing company. They, I'm sure it could be contracted to come down and install the lights for $40,000 or $50,000, but I just prefer to have Bill Bradley install them for $1,000 a day.
Have you worked with that importer before?
No, I have not, no.
And...
The product is really the only, the only issue. They can supply the product.
So I've been trying to get up to speed on this. I'm kind of a technology nerd, so I like to learn new things and that sort of thing. My impression from a lot of people that have like photo studios and set up professional video, like some of the television stations in town and the private studios, is that LED lights are really not, nobody uses LED lights for fixed type of systems like that. LED lights are really for portable cameras. That's really not the appropriate technology for this setting. So why are you recommending LED lights?
Well, I don't, I don't know who you were speaking, I don't know who you were speaking to or if they didn't attend NAB for the last couple of years, but that's all they're showing is LEDs. You don't see companies with the, with the hotspot lights anymore.
Well, to get the quality, though, that we're trying to supposedly go for, LEDs really not a...
Quality is much finer. The quality of an LED light spread across 1,000 bulbs in a space like this is very smooth. And by the time you put a gel in front of it and scrims on the side, it's the best lights there is. It's very soft.
I tried to look up the ones that you're recommending, and I mean, they, those are portable lights. They come with, they actually come with like portable cases and stands. So they're not really even created for this particular situation.
They are, yes, they are. They're multiple use, they're multiple-use lights.
All right. So obviously, we want to make sure that...
I'm just wondering who you're talking to.
What's that?
I'm just wondering who you're talking to.
So, and I was also just trying to understand like the cameras, because obviously, a camera and the lighting paired together are an important mix.
Absolutely. You're absolutely right.
And the cameras that you were recommending that have the particular chips in them, I mean, those were discontinued by Sonya in 2000?
I'm not recommending any cameras at all. What I was speaking of was what we used to have in this room. I had cameras over here and over here, and I was able to get a face-on shot of you from this camera over here. Right now, that same camera is back in the center of the room, at the rear of the room.
Right. If I remember correctly, the council requested that configuration change because the angle put the wrong faceplate in front of the wrong council person, and so we intentionally moved them to the back because that was actually a better setup for the council.
Well, that was a better setup for having the right name under it, but the best setup would be to get a system that would let you put a CG, like the television stations do, where it flashes up electronically.
But the problem got solved, didn't it?
That's really the solution to it.
The problem got solved, didn't it?
Well, the problem of moving them back there, that created most of what you see today, most of the problem today. Because we had no, if you go back before those, while I was shooting from the wings over here, you'll see that there was not, we didn't have that lighting problem.
So you're saying by the relocation to the back of the room, we created the problem?
Relocating in the back of a room and putting these lights up on top has caused the problem. I mean, it wasn't great before.
Is this discussion relevant to the lights? We're talking about, we're not talking about buying cameras now. We're talking about setting up a lighting system. Are we going back into history to debate whether something was good or bad? And if so, we can have that debate, but we should know that we're debating something that's irrelevant to the lights.
Exactly.
I'm just, I'm just concerned that the advice we're getting is not good advice, Dana.
Well, you should be concerned, I would think, that after all these years, we still haven't got it right. Let's try to do it right, and he's the one guy that'll do it. Last time, we were going to spend $5,000, $4,750 for a company that was being recommended to analyze the situation. For $5,000 more, we're going to have a complete redo with this Bradley Electric and with Jay looking at it. Seems to me that that makes an awful lot of sense as compared to nitpicking whether we're going to use LEDs. Who told you that LEDs are no longer good for this?
I called several of the private television studios in the area.
Who? Give us the name of the person who told you that LEDs aren't used for this type of project.
I've got my notes in the other room, so I can go grab it. But the problem is, is that he's recommending that we go back to side angles, and we specifically wanted it in the back. I just think that we're getting bad advice.
That's not, I made no recommendation about moving the cameras at all.
Jay, I don't want to make it personal for you, but here's the issue, is that I'm kind of wondering where this is coming from in the first part. Randy, have we had members of the public who have said that there's an issue with the quality of the video that's coming? I mean, we've seen letters or calls or any feedback?
No, I've had members of the council ask me individually and talk to staff individually, and I wanted to, that's why I asked Kim and Sarah to bring it forward, because I wanted consensus from the council to be able to move forward so we can get this addressed.
Yeah, got it. Thank you.
And staff has complained about the lighting as well.
I just think it's fine. I don't see why we need to spend $10,000 to $15,000 in a year where we have a big budget crunch.
Not $10,000 to $15,000. That was what we were offered last week, two weeks ago. He's saying $10,000 or less.
Yeah, I think a dollar is too much to spend right now. We don't have an issue. The lighting particularly, how much did it cost to add in the extra LEDs, Sarah or Bill?
$50.
$50. So $50, $50, and we've seen a marked improvement, even according to our expert Jay. It's a significantly better improvement with that lighting right there. Do we need to add more? I mean, that was an experiment to add a couple in. Is there the ability to add even a few more of the existing lights that we have if we still have a few shaded areas?
Yes, we can add more lights.
How many more could be added to the system before it's maxed out?
Between six, eight more lights.
Between six to eight more lights could be added at $50 a pop. So if we did eight of them at $50 a pop, we're talking about $350 tops with tax or whatever. So I just, why are we spending $10,000 if the system's fine?
Scott, excuse me. You wouldn't have to spend any money for the lights if you take these and move them back.
Take these and move them back?
This strip up here and move it back.
So what Jay is saying is that these shine more directly on our heads, where if you move them back, they'll shine on the faces.
Jay, what if, what if, I mean, we have tracks right there. We have two, for people at home, we have two sets of track lighting. Could just these lights that are on these tracks right here essentially be moved to those tracks and all of our lights be on the stretch?
Well, I don't know. Bill would have to answer that question.
Bill, is there a circuit issue with that or...
He's not a lighting guy.
Council members, we very easily could put a second row of tracks in. I wouldn't take that one out, but I could put a second row in between the two tracks we have now, which give us more flexibility for adjusting the lights we have.
Let me ask you, Bill, why wouldn't you take this one out?
Well, some of those lights, we could use this front track for coming toward the side. We're talking about the front, is washing out the front area, trying to get it out of the face. It'd give us more flexibility if we need it. And, you know, if we don't need it, we could eventually take it out.
Your cameras are at the rear of the room. You need to light for where the cameras are.
We had this discussion about the cameras, and there's a big hullabaloo among the council members.
The lights, the lights right now exist at the back of the room. If you're just trying to solve a lighting problem, you have to light for the position of the cameras.
Okay, so your idea is to just move this track back?
These do no good for those cameras.
So, Bill, how much would it cost? We could do it in-house essentially to move it.
It's basically negligible cost to move it. We've got space above the move of the wiring behind, so it'd be a negligible cost to move it.
So our expert is suggesting we just simply move them back and we would solve the issue?
I'm suggesting if you don't want to spend money, that you move them back.
I wouldn't say that he's our expert. Mr. Oppenheim doesn't hold himself out to be an expert regarding cameras.
Jay said to move that lights back, that track back, he is holding himself out as an expert in this. And he said, just move those back and our problem is solved.
Well, I've been in this business since 1981. And so, and I've been working every day at it. So I think probably I know a little bit about it.
And I'm taking your advice. Let's move this track back. We can do it in-house and for addition.
That's my, that's my least advice. That won't solve your color temperature and all the rest of it, but that's, as I said, I'm here to see the least amount of money spent at this point because I believe that down the road, things will change and you'll be getting new things, and at that point, you might want to go to the other lights. You could put them up now and solve all those problems.
Or we could with our own staff.
But if you want to save some money right now, you can just move those lights back.
So why don't, so probably would make sense and it'd be fiscally the smart thing to do, to try that option, and if we've solved the problem, then we did it in-house and saved all that money.
Yeah, that would solve your problem. That doesn't necessarily, the reason I'm here. Then, and that's not my, that's not my final...
The reason here is to get a contract, Jay. I understand. I get that. That's cool.
I didn't exactly hear that. Could you repeat?
Oh, I...
My reason is what? Why am I here?
To get a contract from the city. And you can make a living, that's great. I appreciate that. But if we can do, if we can solve the problem by following your advice that you just said by moving that strip back, let's try that. Let's, if the staff has the capacity to do it and its cost is negligible, why wouldn't we not try an option that costs the taxpayers of this city zero instead of writing a contract for you and for Bill Bradley for $10,000 and an importer of lights? Let's try that first and then come back and see.
Okay. I need to, I need to, Dana, excuse me. I need to get, to get this very clear in Scott's mind, if I think it's clear in everyone else's mind. I am doing this for free. It was the council that offered $1,000, and that's the extent of what I'm going to profit from this.
We appreciate you.
I'm not even asking for additional money to follow up on the project, okay? So that having been said now, I'm only here as a citizen to be sure that things come out the right way. You're here to make the decision of what the right way is. My recommendation, my recommendation is for the 1,000-watt lights to go up, and if you would want to wait to do that, and this is not part of my recommendation, but to appease those who don't want to spend money right now, there's a possibility you can move them back and make things enough better that you'll get through for a couple more years.
Jay, I really appreciate that.
When new cameras are desperately needed and new mix system is desperately needed, and I know that there's an attitude on the council, at least in portion of the council, that says, well, it's just a council meeting, information is all the people need. You could do that on radio. You don't need television to do that. The people, if you want people watching the program, there has to be a good-looking program. They have to want to watch it. You have to create a program and watch. So the thing to do is the best you can do.
Jay, tons of people watch this podcast. And I appreciate you as a resident and taxpayer recommending that the most cost-effective would be to move the lights back. I think that's very prudent, and I appreciate that recommendation to try that option and see if we can get to an acceptable level of that. Thank you.
Dana?
Yeah. This discussion, there's a lot of permutations to it that the public doesn't know about and that I'm not going to get into. But all of a sudden, we're talking about trying to do something on the, on the quick fix. Two weeks ago, two weeks ago today, we were in this council meeting with staff having recommended to us, without anybody here on the council saying, well, we could do it for nickels and dimes. Staff two weeks ago recommended, not that we accept the $25,000 or $27,000 proposal of one company, not that we accept the $87,000 proposal of another company, but they recommended that we accept another company, a third company, with price to be determined, with no numbers. And that was the recommendation by staff two weeks ago. And now, all of a sudden, we're talking about, well, if you had a bulb here, and I understand LEDs don't work so well. I can't tell you who did it, but, who said that to me, but that's, throwing out stuff like that, that just confuses an issue that we have been dealing with and staff has been dealing with, and staff could have fixed it for at least two years, that we've been talking about one aspect or another of this problem. And consequently, it's just time to bring this to a halt and get something done right, get it done professionally, not putting a bulb over here and see if that works alone and adding two or three, and that's only $500. But I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the offer to take the matter to Mr., ask for Bill Bradley to enter into an agreement with the city to repair the lighting system in the manner in which, recommended by Jay Jenkins, who's got more experience in this subject than all of us times 10. And to think that we're second-guessing a guy that's doing this for us is, is a bit upsetting. So that's my motion.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Motion, a second discussion. You know, Dana, I'm a little bit unsure as to what we're requesting here as far as the work to be done. we're requesting here as far as the work to be done. I, I know in the, in the summary that Jay has provided to us that we do have a range in here between nine and fifteen, and he says it might be closer to ten. But, you know, based on what we're, and Jay, if you could come up maybe clarify that, the, what you're proposing is, is basically changing all of the lighting system, and this will be good, you said, for up to a couple of years before we need to change the rest of the system?
And I was talking about the incandescents that were, the halogens that are up there now. If we put, if we put the final ones, if we put the LEDs in, they'll be good through any other changes that you make. They'll be consistently.
Okay, so those are more long-term?
Yeah, they'll be where they belong and, and will serve us any systems that, new systems we bring in.
Could you spell out the proposed work that Bradley Electric would have to, to do under the idea of a motion that puts a limited ten thousand dollars on this project?
Yes, yes. We would purchase the LEDs from the LA company, which was my recommendation because it's the least expensive, and that Bill Bradley would install them. He's going to, in scope of work, he's going to pull the power from the back panel. We don't know exactly which panel, whether it's the one back here or the one on that side, but it would require, I'm trying to think how many. As I said, it's, it's sixty watts per one thousand lights or, or per lamp, and we've got ten lamps, so that'd be six thousand watts, six hundred watts.
Do we have a scope of work?
Would that, would that also include moving a strand, a set of lights back?
It could. Yeah, I can have him do that.
Could or would?
Well, I'll, I'll direct him to do it as part of what we're doing. So I believe that can be accomplished. Oh, well, actually, these won't, these won't be moved back. These will be eliminated completely.
Just put in another lane?
These would be eliminated completely.
Oh, I see.
Do we have a scope of work?
Has Bill Bradley been in here and looked at the facility?
Yes, he has. Yeah.
And has he specifically given you some recommendations?
Well, no, he was taking mine. He was taking a direction from me as to what, what we need to do.
Was he in agreement that that was, that would solve the issues that we've been talking about?
He has no expertise in the matter. He's an electrician.
I see.
He does, he does electrical work and, and he does some television work. He did, he worked my home, which is how I came to know him and know his, the quality of his work. So when I needed it, when you asked me the question, I got somebody that could answer that portion of the question.
So you would be directing him as to what to be doing?
I'll be directing him as to what needs to be done, yeah.
Dana, I, I would feel a lot comfortable if, more comfortable if we had a specific contract outlining those things that were to be done and then brought them back to the council.
I think that's a good idea, Richard. I would modify my motion that, and that we ask Jay Jenkins to meet with Bradley Electric and give us a specific proposal that is capped at ten thousand, but if something is deemed to be necessary, that it be delineated and the price added to that so that we would know that what we were stepping into.
All right, terrific. And that the contract would be with Bill Bradley?
Right.
Okay, I'll write the scope of work for him and then have him.
Would it be advantageous to do like we normally do in the procurement process and ask the community to come in and have other proposals?
I can't hear you.
I'm so sorry. Would it be advantageous to do as we do in the normal procurement process and ask others to provide proposals as well? I mean, Isaiah, is this standard process that we're doing?
We didn't do it last time. Last, two weeks ago, we had three of them that were sent out as proposals to us.
I wasn't in favor of last week either.
With a recommendation to accept one of them.
I'm in agreement with you. Last week's staff report, or the last meeting's staff report is incomplete as well. So could we go through a better process?
So let's just solve, let's just solve the problem quickly, and ten thousand dollars is not enough money to cause us to go through the process, taking staff time to do that, to issue a request for proposal. Particularly, what he's doing now is going to define the proposal. If that issue is relevant at all, that you think a request for proposal should be, should be after we get the specific proposal of somebody who thinks that they're going to solve our problem.
So to answer your question, Councilman Hines, typically, in the ten thousand range, there is a RFP process that has went through. However, the city hasn't passed, decided to sole source projects. Typically, with our construction projects, we, we don't do that because there are so many different vendors that can provide the service related to construction. Typically, you see sole source on a specialized service that you're really not going to find a lot of competition for. In this case, you know, it's probably up to the council, but I would recommend that we follow internal purchasing procedures that the city has to make sure that any vendor that is doing work on site has a valid contract and meets the minimum requirements of our contracts as far as if someone's doing construction here on site, the city is held liable, which is why our city attorney's office so aggressively reviews contracts and makes sure, and make sure that our insurance requirements and the specifications that any vendor on site has meet the highest level to protect the city. So there.
I'm not sure. Are you saying that you think every proposal requires a request for proposal to go out?
No.
Right, because, I mean, we haven't done that. We've never done that, and individual circumstances pretty much govern if we're going to go that process. I misunderstood you apparently.
No, we can, we can do sole sourcing, but what he's saying is that there's an internal process to vet contractors to make sure that, like, they have insurance and that they have a valid business.
He's been our contractor. He's been our contractor for ten, twelve years.
But I wouldn't be the contractor in this case.
No, it's not the same type of contract, but to vet him?
No, Bill Bradley.
I think he's pretty well vetted.
I was speaking to the electrician.
And do we make sure that, like, the equipment has warranties and that sort of thing and all of that?
Yeah, typically, the, the city does not purchase from Amazon. I heard that you're not going to be purchasing from Amazon, but that's usually a source that we don't purchase from because of the lack of recourse or protection to the city that there's really no one to default back to if something goes wrong down the road.
So we'll take a scope of work. We'll, we'll have the city attorney provide the contract. We'll have the finance department make sure liability issues are addressed. We'll have the facilities department make sure that it's possible to do the work, and we'll have the building official look at it as well to make sure it's a feasible project from an electrical code standpoint.
There you go.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Sounds perfect.
Okay. That's the motion.
Yeah.
So we have a motion, and did we put an upper limit on that, Dana, at ten thousand? Are we going to allow them to come back?
I thought we said, yeah, we said ten thousand, but if there, something was recommended in excess of that, that it would be specified in the additional amount specifically identified.
Yeah, I, I think we don't want to limit them if they get to that point or a little bit closer to it.
Right, yeah, I agree with you.
To come back to us.
So now we actually will have four proposals on the table.
Right, we've got three from last time and.
Jay and Mr. Bradley's will be the fourth proposal.
Right.
Because we had the three previous ones that were brought in two weeks ago.
And Fred, just to clarify, you're basically contributing your oversight for zero. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
In other words, you're merely volunteering.
That's correct.
Your time to oversee Bradley or whomever to make certain that this project is done correctly. Is that accurate?
That's accurate, yes.
I thought the motion we passed last meeting said that if we move forward with his proposal, he gets paid.
But we'll stretch the ending date to installation.
Sorry, I don't understand. Are, are you getting paid for this or not?
When, when you, if you were voting right now to approve this, you owe me a thousand dollars.
I see.
But I'm willing to follow it through to the end for that same thousand.
Okay, so you are getting paid a thousand dollars.
By your, by your approval last meeting.
As I said last week, he, he offered to do it for nothing. We talked about a number, and we settled on two thousand, I think. And then at the end, I said, well, let's just make it one thousand if we accept any of his proposals. And right now, we still haven't got to the point of accepting.
That's right.
We're at the point now of clarifying the one proposal, one of two that he's suggested.
Right.
Sarah, can you clarify if we had official proposals at the last meeting or not? I don't think we did.
We did not release an RFP. What we did was contact various vendors, local and other ones we've worked with in California and actually one outside of California, and requested that they take a look at the chambers and provide their best recommendations. I also wanted to clarify, there was some confusion, it sounds like, regarding one of the items saying that the cost was not determined. That is not correct. What we were requesting was that the city enter a design agreement. So we would pay this firm to have a design put together. This would be an official, thoughtful, thorough design that would take all these things into account. Unfortunately, what we have before us today, in my opinion, is a little confusing and unclear. It doesn't talk about what kind of circuits we need to bring in, what that kind of cost would be. It's, it's very haphazard. Oh, maybe it's this light or that light. It's, we'll try this, and if it doesn't work, we'll try something else. And that's what we're trying to avoid by bringing in a professional audiovisual firm that focuses on lighting and that that's their expertise.
Sarah, was it, did you initiate this whole thing? I mean, I, I heard staff.
I was asked to, I was asked to reach out to get some proposals by, there was a complaint on the council.
From the council members?
Correct.
So this whole process was initiated by the council, not staff?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So this will just be the fourth one. You've got three that are not RFPs. This will simply be the fourth one.
As I said at the last meeting, I do think if we're going to go out to do a design process, which is what Jay was proposing.
Well, no, no, last, last time you gave us three numbers, three, two sets of numbers and one that you recommended that had no number to it, but we were recommending.
It was a four thousand.
If we followed the recommendation, we would have recommended it with blank to be filled in later as to the amount.
No, that's not correct. It was.
Well, that's what it said.
It was a four thousand seven hundred fifty dollar design fee agreement.
So that was for the study, that was for the study or opinion.
Mm-hmm.
But you recommended them to do the whole set of work. I, I've read it too. Anyway, this will just be another one for us to consider.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor right now. We have a second.
The city clerk has asked for clarification. So it's a motion to submit, is to direct Mr. Jenkins to submit a proposed scope of services regarding the lighting situation, not to exceed an amount of ten thousand dollars.
Is to have Bill Bradley Electric, Bradley Electric submit that with, in consultation with Jay Jenkins.
And with the supervision of Jay Jenkins.
Right.
If the job is accepted.
Right, and the thousand dollars will be paid upon completion of installation.
Doesn't matter, yeah, that, that works fine.
Dana, is it your thought then, when, when we received this proposal, to compare it to the other proposals? In other words, there would be.
If they, if they, if staff, if staff wants us to consider them, fine. I, I, that, they were presented to us as staff proposals. If staff has got a different attitude by them now, so be it, and they can withdraw anything they want. But this is just to get this thing moving, get this behind us, and the internecine warfare that's going on here in this room over this issue.
Mr. Hobart, I, I was asked to bring these proposals forward last time to just get consensus.
I understand. Sarah, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about, I'm just talking about things that are going on behind the scenes. You know it every bit as much as I do, and we're not spilling it out. We're keeping it to ourselves, and that's fine. But we had two and a half proposals, however you want to refer it, from last time. We're getting another one this time.
The purpose of the report last week was to poll the council and to find out if, if the council members felt there was an issue. And the feedback I got at the meeting was that, well, perhaps it's a little dark on the side of the dais, but there wasn't a major issue.
Well, that's what we're going to solve now. That's, we're just trying to solve that now without turning this into a full opera.
Okay. I think we've discussed this enough. Ted, are you okay with where we are?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Would you all please vote? And the motion carries four for, one against. And I don't think we set a timeframe on this, but I would hope we'd be able to look at the numbers before the next council meeting.
Do you think you can do that? Okay, he's nodding yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll now go on to item number nine, or number eight, which has to do with captioning services for the city council meetings. And Sarah, are you going to discuss this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff was requested by Mayor Potom Smotrich to research options to provide captioning services for the hearing impaired attending council meetings. In addition, staff also researched providing the captioning on Rancho Mirage TV broadcasts, the video stream on the city's website, and also DVDs that are produced for permanent record. The staff report outlines a few of these options, and I'll just quickly summarize them. The most basic captioning service that we can implement is to utilize the services of a remote captioner who will listen to the meeting in real time and upload the meeting's text to a website. The text stream can be viewed by any web-enabled device such as a smartphone or a tablet. The one-time cost, one-time hardware cost for this is about five hundred dollars, and there are ongoing captioning services. It's an hourly rate for that person's services. That would cost approximately ten thousand dollars annually, dependent upon the length of the meetings. The next level of service would be to extend the captioning service to those who watch meetings on RMTV, the city's website, or on DVD. To caption each of these recordings, staff would overlay a special time-coded text file in post-production. The files can be produced by the captioning provider for approximately three thousand three hundred dollars, again, based on the length of the meetings. Another option that we can consider is a live video stream with embedded captioning. The stream could be accessed by any web-enabled device in real time, such as a tablet, computer, or smartphone. The one-time cost for this solution is eleven thousand seven hundred fifty. Staff requests that council provide direction to move forward in regard to the outlined closed captioning technologies.
Thank you, Sarah. Can you go back and, and tell me what the difference is between option one and option two, aside from the cost?
Certainly. Option two sort of is an addition to option one. Option one is the hardware to enable a basic stream of text that could be viewed on a tablet. So for example, an individual in the audience now could pull up their smartphone, pull up a website, and watch the text live while the meeting's going on. But if we want to take it to the next step and also provide that same text for recordings, for DVDs, for the web stream, for RMTV, and have that caption available, we need this additional time-coded file.
Okay, so in option one, where we're talking about an annual cost of eight to ten thousand dollars, that's the basic cost, and anything that we want above and beyond, that would cost additional amount annually.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're not really options. I think number one is the basic system, and then two and three are menu of items to add to it.
That's correct.
Okay, and does staff have a recommendation here?
I think staff would be very comfortable moving forward with the first option. It's fairly straightforward. It's one piece of equipment we'd have to install. It wouldn't require any major modifications, and it's fairly low cost. So I, I think we feel comfortable with that.
Sarah, could you also explain about the closed captioning and how it would be crawling across the bottom of the screen during its broadcast and also while it's being shown in the chamber?
So during the live meeting, what we're proposing in option one is a website that would have the text streaming in real time that can be displayed on any web-enabled device. So that could be a television, or, I'm sorry, computer screen. It could be a tablet. It could be a computer, anything web-enabled.
Right, but that, would that be a delay as people are speaking?
It's a couple, it's a second or two. It's negligible.
But it's not a problem for most people?
No.
Okay. And that would be the same type of display that would be on there, on the RMTV?
RMTV would be importing this text file, the time-coded text file. So that would happen in post-production, and yes, it would be the same captioning. We would be using the captioning provided from the live meeting.
Okay, so that would also have the same few-second delay?
Well, in that case, we could correct the delay because it's post-production.
Okay. Would that require a great deal of time or effort to redo and add the post-production?
Staff already spends quite a bit of time in post-production, making the DVDs, getting things on YouTube, on the city's website, out for RMTV. So this is just one extra level of service the staff would provide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Scott?
Sarah, I just don't understand the difference with option number three. What, what, they just sort of read the same to me. What is number three actually provide?
Okay, I'm sorry if there was confusion. So as it stands today, we have a device called a capture station that records the meetings in real time, and this is what we use for staff internally to watch meetings. So it's a live video stream of the meeting. And in theory, you could open it up, but right now, it's for our staff to watch. And what we're proposing here is that we would upgrade that system and add the captioning ability. So you could have a live video stream with the captioning going out.
So right now, people in the public cannot watch what's happening right now in real time?
That's correct.
Only our internal staff.
That's correct.
So if we went with option three, then we can broadcast in real time with closed captioning?
Well, broadcasting on TV is a little bit different. We do.
I mean, on the web, sorry.
On the, on the web, yes, that was what number three would provide.
So if a resident is traveling in the summertime but wants to tune in and see So if a resident is traveling in the summertime but wants to tune in and see what's happening in the meeting in real time, the only way they can do that is if we go with option number three?
Yes, that's correct.
And is that an additional cost of $11,750, or that is the total?
It's hardware. So yes, it's a, it's a one-time hardware cost.
It's a one-time fee, and then forever and ever, we can live, livestream our meetings in closed.
The only thing I could predict possibly as an add-on expense to that is if these meetings had a great demand and we had a huge viewing audience, we might have to increase our bandwidth. But that's really a what-if.
Highly unlikely. Well, I, I mean, these days, you can tune in and watch most every, I mean, LA City Council, for example, we could, if they're meeting right now, you can pull up your tablet and watch it. I mean, really, if we're going to do an upgrade to this, I think we should invest in the long-term solution to be able to let people watch as it's happening. I mean, that's a, that's a wonderful service, and that's current. That's what we should be doing. You know, I thought we were doing that.
No, I thought we were livestreaming.
I always thought we were as well.
We're not livestreaming.
We have the ability to live broadcast to Time Warner Cable, but we do not. And we do not do the live web stream.
Is there an additional cost also to livestream to Time Warner Cable?
There's no cost. That's just literally, it's a switch.
Oh, geez, why aren't we doing that?
Yeah, I thought we'd make that decision some time ago.
No, we've, staff has never been...
We knew we couldn't view it directly on TV, but we could livestream.
Right, but we have so many people in our city that travel on a regular basis that if we also then make it available on tablets, then, and we flip the switch on Time Warner Cable, then I think we're pretty current.
So is there any reason we wouldn't want to livestream?
Well, what about, what about everything that happens in post-production? If you livestreamed this, aren't we then asking for lots of questions to be asked about the AV again?
What we do in post-production is not, we have a gavel-to-gavel meeting. We do not edit in the middle of the meeting. The only exception to that is if there's a break.
I'm sorry, not the audio, I mean, the appearance of it.
We don't change the appearance.
There's no enhancements?
No, absolutely not.
Between the recording of the meeting and fixing lighting and all that?
No.
I thought we fixed lighting and we, nothing like that at all?
No.
Well, it was my understanding that we did make adjustments as far as lighting and as far as some corrections that needed to be made in post-production.
No, absolutely not.
Okay, all right. So the only post-production is if we'd like take a recess or something like that, we cut that out?
Right, and what we do, what's time-consuming is that for all the different ways that we show these meetings, they have to be rendered in different formats. So we render it for a DVD. We render it for YouTube. We render it for RMTV. So there's different work associated with that, but it's not tweaking color or changing audio or any kind of editing. That's absolutely not. We are gavel-to-gavel, unedited. Again, with the exception, if there's a break, we'll just take out the break.
Kurt, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just had a comment on the captioning issue, separate, I think, from the livestreaming. Can you clarify, because I've seen this on other broadcasts of other cities, if we have the closed captioning appearing, whether it's during livestreaming or post-production, do we have a potential, just like currently here, that that would cover up the name of the person who is identified?
Yeah, that was my question, too.
And that's been a sensitivity, I know, of the council. And you may be trading off one issue for another. You now have closed captioning, but the viewer can't see the name of the person speaking at that time.
We'd probably have to work on it to make sure that it's laid out in a way that's easy for the viewer to watch. And I'd probably just take some staff time, some tweaking the layout.
Sarah, so I think one of the concerns when we talked about livestreaming before was that we would have a live broadcast going on at that time, and that some of the council were concerned about broadcasting live as opposed to having a taped delay. I don't know whether that's a problem anymore or not. I mean, everybody is going that direction.
Well, no swearing. We have to agree to that, so it's family-friendly.
Well, I think that, one of the issues, I think, that came with livestreaming was if somebody did happen to come up to speak and was not as complimentary as they could be in their language, and that might be an issue. And could that be eliminated?
I can mute the microphone.
Oh, there you go.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff?
I have one question. Has anybody talked to Paul Hagel about this?
We've got Paul here today.
He's here in the audience.
Yes, in fact, he is going to speak.
I didn't see him.
Paul?
Oh, there he is, oh, yes.
Would you like to come forward?
He's our resident expert on the ADA requirements and how we are doing.
Nice to have you here, Paul.
Nice to be here, Mayor. City councilman, councilperson.
Name and address, please.
Paul Hagel, 98 Lake Shore, here in Rancho Mirage. For those of you who don't know a little bit about my background, I am the executive director of the National Association of ADA Coordinators, which was founded 22 years ago. And I've been working with that for, indirectly, for those 22 years. For those who may be watching, ADA is not the American Dental Association. It's the Americans with Disabilities Act. It was passed in 1990. It was implemented in 1992. It was again updated by Congress in 1998, and a new set of regulations came out in 2010. Basically, the ADA was formulated, formulated from the Rehab Act of 1973, and it has been adopted and included in the UNRWA Act, which is the Civil Rights Act for the state of California. Many people look at the ADA as being a building code or being an employment law or being social security disability law. It's not. It's a civil rights law. So what you really have to look at is what are the civil rights of the people who are watching your program? And that is the purpose of your real-time captioning, because people with hearing impairments cannot hear what's going on. The law basically says that you should have program access. It's required by all state and local governments. You're not the only government that's handling this one right now. There's about 80,000 in the United States. But commission meetings are also included in this. So people who are attending those meetings who happen to be hearing impaired know what's going on, and they can participate. I think that David Bryant, David's over there, David and I have talked many, many times about the library programs. Effective communications is, by the law, by the regulations, very, very important for program access. Program access is access to any program that the city or a local government, state government puts on. Hearing impaired, hearing impairments are becoming, really, starting at a very young age now. According to the United States Government Statistics, 5.2 million children between the ages of six and 19 years old are now suffering hearing loss, not hearing impairments, but hearing loss, and basically due to loud noise. This is affecting them from a standpoint of impaired language development, ability to learn, and social interactions. According to the National Institute on Deafness and Other Communication Disorders, about one in three U.S. adults between the ages of 65 and 75 have hearing, have impaired hearing. According to the institute, also, that half the people 75 years or older also have a degree of hearing loss as well. Closed captioning for a person who is hearing impaired is just like a wheelchair is to somebody who's mobily impaired. It's their way of getting into the world. I, there are other things, like large print for people who can't, who need glasses. But anyway, I think that looking at Sarah's report, which is a very good report, and I think covers a lot of the aspects, is very important. And I think your direction on closed captioning is needed, and I think it's very commendable, your looking at it. And I realize that there's a cost associated with this, but there's also, it's also a civil rights act, a situation. And I think being proactive on this issue, as well as attention to site and web accessibility issues, is the right place to be at any particular time right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here today. Are there any questions to Paul before he leaves the mic?
No, I don't have any questions, but I would like to make a comment, and I thank you so much for coming today. You've certainly been an inspiration to so many cities to be able to implement the necessary tools to provide for those who are really in need. And considering the demographics of our desert here especially, more and more laws are coming down all the time that are making life easier for those in need. And I know from my own experience just recently with a couple of toe surgeries, that I was so limited. If I would show up to a store and a cart was not available, or not, the battery was not charged, I simply had to go home. There was no way for me to get around. And people take those things for granted if they're not disabled in some way. And I think it shows a new appreciation that the city of Rancho Mirage is showing to its residents and to its visitors, that we are wanting to stay on top of giving the very best to our residents and our visitors so that they can feel comfortable coming here, and we can set the standard for all the other cities to follow, especially with the problems that people have in later life. So I thank you so much, and I always thank you for your input.
Thank you very much. And I'd also like to mention that we work with both the Department of Justice, we work with the White House, we work with the Department of Labor, Department of Education. All of these, all these basic enforcing agencies are really putting a lot of effort in on closed captioning, as well as web accessibility issues, particularly, and I think you're going to see a brand-new regulation coming out on web accessibility, probably by the end of the year, but that's a guess.
And that was one...
What's going on in Washington, who knows?
Right, and that was one of the requests that I had made to our department working on the, our website, that provisions be made to people tuning in that are, have impairments, and that they be able to understand the scope of what we are putting out on our website.
And you're doing, I think you're doing a good job, so.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff on this item?
You know what, I just have one additional question for Sarah, because I know it talks about $8,000 to $10,000 annually, but if we go with number three, and that's a cost of $11,750, is it all, all three of these categories?
That's a one-time cost.
Right, the $11,000 is.
We still have the basic cost of $8,000 to $10,000 a year.
Right, we're still going to stick with that, with the, with the yearly cost.
Right.
So to clarify, the first cost that we talk about is $500 for a piece of equipment, along with approximately $10,000 a year for the service of captioning, and that would be an ongoing service. The other two items are add-ons to that service.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions, can we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that the city council approve moving forward with the purchase of hardware that allows us to provide closed captioning services for both those in the audience, those watching Rancho Mirage TV, the website, and DVDs, and those wishing to access our meetings through live video stream, with hardware costs totaling what is in the staff report, as well as the authorization to pursue the annual captioning service costs to provide services for those that are hearing impaired.
Sarah, a second?
Took over.
Ted, you said second. Okay, the one thing I want to make sure is that we're only proposing to have closed captioning for city council meetings and nothing else in the city at this time.
Correct, that was my intention, yes.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Mr. Mayor, if I could also make comment about our hearing devices that we have both here, at City Hall, and also at the library. And for those people who are in need, in fact, we have a sign right outside here saying that if you have a need for a hearing device, please check in with the front desk, and we will provide one to you. And that's the same thing at the library also.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just for council's information, this will require a budget adjustment. We had $2,000 budgeted in the ADA account, and Isaiah and I will work and bring back the adjustment at a later date.
Okay, so we'll be doing that at mid-year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we also include in all of our agendas a little footnote that reads, "People with disabilities are encouraged to attend. If you have special communication or access needs, please contact city offices at 760-324-4511 for business days in advance of the meeting. Hearing assistance devices are available from the city clerk at the meeting." So that's included in our notice.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Councilmember Wyll.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do we have the results of the vote?
I need to have a vote from Councilmember Wyll.
Ted?
Again?
Again, you get to vote twice. Okay, thank you. Motion carries five zero. Okay, we'll now move on to item number nine, and I see David Bryant down there.
Yes, you do, Mr. Mayor.
The library director who is going to discuss a pending library staffing change and adding a FT library accounting technician, too.
Yes, that's, that's our request today, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council serving as library board. We request that you approve the addition of a full-time library staff position, and that's accounting technician, too. And we've given you in the staff report mention of approximately $270,000 in revenue from many different sources annually. These are not city funds. These are funds contributed to the library that arrive at the library through fines that people pay for overdue materials. Our bookstore generates about $48,000 per year. We have two book sales that generate about $8,000 per year. So, in other words, there are various revenue streams coming into the library. And speaking with Isaiah Hagerman, Isaiah suggested that it seemed time, with the kind of money, the kind of cash that's flowing through the library, to have perhaps greater accountability and a person fully involved in this. The process of recording this revenue and making sure that the finance department receives it in a timely manner and that these funds are fully placed where they shall be in, in all record-keeping and all reporting. So that's what we bring before you today. We think this position is affordable for us. We do not think it breaks the budget by any means, and you can see that on page two of your staff report. Total cost for the first year, net cost, is an additional $8,526 to the library budget. Second year total cost is estimated at $25,740,000. Now, I mentioned estimated, $25,740. And I estimate that in the second year, we may see a shifting of some of this burden to the foundation. What we plan to do at the end of the first year of this person's employment is to take a good, hard look at how much time is being spent on foundation versus library revenue. And it could well be that the foundation picks up a percentage of this cost. I welcome questions. I know Isaiah is here as well to, to answer questions.
That was going to be one of my questions, is, is how much interfacing will this person do with Isaiah? What will be the reporting relationship, overseeing relationship, and so, so forth?
Yeah, so the way I would describe it is, on a day-to-day basis, this position will answer to the library director, but they also, this position will follow the set policies and procedures and guidelines of the city finance department. So they will be working very closely with us and work within our existing policies and procedures.
So you'll be reviewing the reports that are generated?
Correct. They will fall under our fiscal oversight as far as making sure that the processes that we have here at City Hall are also followed over at the library. And also, you know, this position is meant to maybe bridge the gap a little bit between City Hall and the library, where currently the library has no resource to go to for financial matters. So this position will be on special projects, maybe not the one implementing it, but they can come work closely with us over in the finance department and then bring the result back to the library director.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? I think, based on the meeting that we had previously with finance and with David and the subcommittee, it really looks like this is a long-term cost savings for the individual that we're getting, and an individual who can... that we're getting, and an individual who can really interface more with the foundation, and give us a better, ongoing record-keeping process, but also good for fundraising and things like that.
Very much so, Mr. Mayor. That's how we see this, so, thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who has a question on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to council for a motion, please.
Let's move the request, as the library board approved, the addition of a new full-time library staff position, accounting technician, too, at salary grade 27.
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries, 5-0. We'll now move on to item number 10, which is a receive-and-file Rancho Mirage Redevelopment Agency Asset Transfer Review, performed by the California State Controller, and Isaiah, or Kurt, which, okay, Isaiah.
Isaiah? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. This is just a receive-and-file for you, and what this report is, is during the dissolution process of the redevelopment agencies, the law was written to make sure there was multiple reviews of assets that the redevelopment agency was holding, to make sure that when they were transferred to the successor agency, that all the assets made it to where they should. So actually, the city went through three rounds of review. So we went through a review by an independent CPA firm, and then we went through a review by the California Department of Finance, and the third review was the report that you have here, which was done by the California State Controller's office. And the purpose of that review was, again, to review the transfer of assets from the former redevelopment agency into the successor agency, to make sure that all the assets ended up in the correct place. So I'm pleased to report that, as noted, there were two findings called out. However, they followed that up immediately with, there were no corrective actions required on behalf of the city, because either the corrective action was already taken, or we provided further justification on why our process was valid, and where the assets went. So this is another successful step in the process of the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? In the next-to-last paragraph of the letter from the state controller, talks about the RDA failing to transfer the 7.3 million, but then goes on to mention that part of it was cash, and part of it was inland. Is that what they're looking for, is they're looking to more detail as to where the assets are?
Yeah, so I'll just briefly give a little bit more information about the two instances that they call out. So they were looking at the assets, so they were looking at cash, they were looking at receivables, they were looking at land. And so in finding number one, they disallowed a transfer of just over $6 million to our housing authority. And what staff got was a demand letter from the Department of Finance, saying, "Turn over the $6 million in five days." And based off staff's research into the Health and Safety Code, we went through a meet-and-confer process, where staff successfully presented their case, that according to the law, approximately 3.6 of that $6 million disallowed was legitimate under the law. And so DOF actually agreed with staff on this standpoint, and the disallowed transfer was reduced from $6 million down to $2.4 million. So staff was pretty happy with that result. The second finding is, they noted that we had cash on hand of about $5.9 million that was not transferred to the successor agency. And what this cash was, is prior to dissolution of the redevelopment agencies, the redevelopment agency received a tax increment from the county, and then we had the responsibility to make the pass-through payments to the various taxing entities. So an example would be school districts. So prior to dissolution date, we received one disbursement from the county that followed the old rules, where we got the gross money, and then we had to distribute out to the various taxing agencies. So this $5.9 million was held to distribute out to the various taxing agencies. So we just provided the evidence that it went to the appropriate party. And then the last one was land held for resale, and this was an approved land sale, went through the approval of the successor agency and the oversight board, and it followed the old rules. Basically, first law that we saw was ABX 26, and the directive there was to, if your successor agency has any property, you need to sell it as soon as you can, and give the money to the taxing agencies. So subsequently to that, you saw AB 1484 come out, that clarified the rules as far as getting rid of property, and you then had to submit a long-range property management plan. But this land fell under the old rules, and we sold it to a third party, and the cash, or the cash proceeds from the sale of that land, went to the taxing agencies. So essentially, they concluded that, yeah, you withheld this asset, but it was for a proper purpose.
Thank you for your explanation on that. Are there any other questions on that item? Okay, that's a receive-and-file, so we will note such. And we will now move on to item number 11, which, Isaiah, you're back again, and this one discusses our recent bond sale.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. You know, this is really part of the more exciting things that we get to do. I think one of the things that I've appreciated, since I've started here with the city, is getting to work with people that really have the concern of the community in mind, and, you know, not just one company, or not just for the city. And I think that this is an outstanding achievement by our city, by our city council. This was for the good of the community, and we are among the first in the state of California to complete this. So one of the exciting things that I get to do is where, you know, you see the results of your hard work and effort, and the council gets to see the results of their hard work and effort, too, and it's for the good of the whole community. So what we embarked on was a bond redemption and refunding plan of our successor agency debt. And the plan concluded on September 25th, whereby the successor agency sold 50.4 million in tax allocation bonds, and together with bond proceeds of $22.7 million, redeemed and refunded $72.3 million in successor agency debt. And so what this plan did is, we reduced the overall debt that the successor agency has, and we also refinanced the interest rate on some of the outstanding debt, to achieve even more savings. And the end result of this plan reduced overall debt service by $37.2 million over the next 20-some years. And what that means is, that $37.2 million will now flow through to local taxing agencies, instead of bondholders. So you're talking about school districts, your water districts, the city. So this is going to be a great thing, we were able to get another $37.2 million, you know, not just for the city, but for all the local taxing agencies. The refinancing part had a net present value savings of about $4.8 million. So essentially, the difference in interest rate that we got by refinancing saved an additional $4.8 million. A great fact here is that we did issue three bonds, and our bonds represented the sixth, seventh, and eighth successor agency bond refundings in the state of California, since redevelopment agencies were dissolved. And I would like to thank Kurt Watts, our Development Services Director, who was my co-lead on this, and there was many conference calls, many late nights, a lot of paperwork. I'd also like to take a minute to thank our bond refunding team, which consisted of our financial advisor, Kurt Decrenas, our bond counsel, Bill Bothwell, and our co-managing underwriters from Stifel and Citi. And also for the city council to have the foresight to approve a project like this, that's for the good of the community. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions? It was a great job, and we almost hit the low of the interest rate market, too. So all the timing on this really came out perfect, and saved a lot of money.
It did.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Isaiah and his team for doing a great job. I'd also like to express my condolences, the fact that this is an area which you find great excitement, and I hope you find others in the future.
Thank you. You know, we pick on Isaiah too much around here, I think. Kurt?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to express, similar to Councilmember Wile's comment, that I can assure you that during this process, which has been about a six-month process to bring this to this point, from when it really first started full steam, Isaiah's enthusiasm wasn't quite as extreme during the long conference calls with the various bondholder representatives, where we basically had to listen ad nauseam to all the fine details of the various reports that had to be issued, and the analysis, and the reams and reams of paper, if we printed out all of the various electronic versions of the schedules. And I would just like to comment as well, that, you know, we've been working on this overall dissolution of the redevelopment agency for almost two and a half years now, from when the governor first announced that this was his intent. And I just want to reinforce that, had we not had the good fortune of hiring Isaiah as a finance director, I assure you, we would have been much more challenged in our ability to reach these various notable achievements. And you will see the continuing results of this, in such things as our ability to start spending the excess bond proceeds as of January 1st, which would have been eligible even without this program, but it's just one more thing that we can add to as a feather in our cap, that we're handling this process very promptly and efficiently, and in a way that will benefit not only Rancho Mirage, but the broader community.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in the audience want to comment on this issue? Okay, this is another receive-and-file issue, so it is so received and filed, and thank you, Isaiah, thank you, Kurt. And this is the last item on the agenda. Before we recess to closed session, I'll turn it over to our city attorney, who will discuss the issue to be covered in closed session.
At this point, the city council is going to recess into closed session, to confer with its real property negotiator, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 subdivision B, regarding property located at 42520 Bob Hope Drive in Rancho Mirage.
Thank you, we are in recess.